Get all those things, as they say in the theater, open your wrappers off. Get your, there we go. Welcome. My name is Barb Nosferi. I'm the mayor of Durango. And welcome to this study session. I'm going to start by having us go around and introduce ourselves, speaking into the microphone, so anyone who is listening can hear us. So I'll start with Mayor Protem.
Melissa Yusef, Mayor Protem.
Jessica Buel, City Councilor.
Kim Baxter, City Councilor.
Jose Manuel, City Mayor.
Great, thank you. I will start this meeting as I start the study sessions and city council with my own kind of personal land acknowledgement. This represents my views, it's my statement, and it's not a statement from all of City Council. Let me just start by saying that for thousands of years, this region was home to numerous people, bands, tribes, and nations. Each had their distinct culture, artistic expression, and community mores. In particular, this region was the ancestral home of the Njuju, Dene, Pueblo, Hopi, multiple Apache bands, and various other tribes and Latinx people who used and stewarded this land. I recognize that indigenous peoples were forcibly removed from their ancestral lands by the US government. It is therefore important to recognize that the narrative of this region has mostly been told from the dominant perspective without recognition of those who came before us and who to this day continue to thrive, create, and connect with this land. Thank you for your respect in my acknowledging this legacy. Thank you. So today, I just want to go over very quickly. We have future new business and review of agenda items coming up. We'll do family medical leave, and that will be Erin, who will be coming through with that. We're going to do an upgrade on, we'll have an update on the City Council Joint Homeless Working Group. We just had a meeting today, and that may take a little bit more than 20 minutes. So I want to acknowledge that we may need to move some things around. We have the Board of Ethics here. We're pleased to see some of you in the audience, and they will be, we'll be talking about the Ethics Code and possible revisions. And then I also see the team where you have the Comprehensive Parking Management Draft Plan we'd be discussing. Before we go to new business, I want to pull our attention to November 4th agenda. So I want to make certain people are clear, councils clear on that, because we only have two meetings before we go into budget. So next, our next meeting, and also, yeah, two meetings before we have to reconcile. Next meeting, we will do a preliminary budget reconciliation. It's on the agenda for the first. We'll have a library district update. I'm not certain how much that'll be different from what we had with the county commissioners. So I. The Grand View Project discussion is Allison. Will that also include Lake Night Horse piping as well? I don't see Allison here. Okay. So, all right. And then we do have, and I wanted to remind, we talked about this back in the summer when we actually went through. So we have, next session, the 2005 sales tax and possible the reallocation of the larger tax. And the intent was to talk about everything we think we need to fund and that big picture, not just the housing, but the intent that was the, had been the intent, I do believe. That's where I'm going, that we may.
At least an hour.
I think we probably need more on that, Jose. And I'm, I personally am feeling like we got the library district update at the city-county meeting. I don't know, that can save us a bit of time if council is supportive of that.
We can move that. I just.
We can move it. Yeah, because there's more. I think he's got more. He's got the report.
Except for, interestingly enough, this is an interesting thing, is that we're going to get that library district update, and it will have information, I believe, on the polling and the questions and stuff, which may also add to our discussion, because the third was, what if we had a library district ballot question?
Yeah.
I mean, it's all part of the funding equation, so I don't know if we may want to have.
So to save time, what I can say is we can do the 10-minute break. That'll add, we can add 10 minutes to that discussion of the financing.
Yep.
And if we all commit to sharing in advance what our future new business may be, we can save some time there. So if we, if we work that way, I think we can make everything happen at the next meeting.
Okay. And also, we can get done a little late. It's 4:40. It's here during the winter. That's right. We've done it five o'clock.
All right. So also, between council, because I do believe that financing discussion, a little more, so between council, we're committed to possibly staying as late as five, being, going without the break, and getting our new business items shared in advance. Thank you all.
I'd also like to say that I think on today's study session, I think the Board of Ethics conversations.
I do, agreed.
So we may not have a 10-minute break today.
I don't believe we'll have a 10-minute break today, and I believe we may need to go later. I believe the, all of those later might place, and Erin is also going to try to shave some time from her presentation. We've discussed that in advance. All right. So does, does anyone have new business or things that need to be brought up for future new business?
I don't.
I have one item. It has to do with homelessness, but I believe if you'll allow me to, I will discuss it when Jose and I give the, kind of that update, and then it may come up that we need to have a new, future new business discussion around.
Do we need to give any direction on the attorney conversation that's been sent by email?
I think these two.
I think.
Handle it.
And I will get back to them.
That's perfect.
Yeah, I think we are Mayor Protem.
Yeah, we just have.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no problem. Okay. Efficiency, love it. All right. Erin, I do believe that family medical leave insurance, this is information only. I don't even believe you're asking for direction right now, or are you?
I don't know.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, the judge.
Oh, thank you.
I said the judge, that's what I meant.
Oh, please forgive me. Yes.
Sarah's email.
Yes, that's the email I was talking about.
Pause. I didn't bring my notes on that, and I actually said I was going to raise it. Do we need to discuss her plan for hiring her second thing? I'm comfortable with it, but I wanted to bring it to council if there was a need to.
I sent an email to her that I was comfortable with it.
You're comfortable, you're comfortable, you're comfortable. There's my note.
I actually think there's some other things that council needs to discuss around municipal court in the city and the municipal judge, beside just the hiring situation. So maybe there's time for a conversation for that sometime.
Okay, so she is bringing the assistant judge on January 1st. So.
I don't have any issue with an assistant judge coming on, but I think that there's some bigger picture issues about how the municipal court functions that we might want to have a discussion on.
Can we do that after the new year, after the judge has been on board? We're comfortable with that? So Jose, can we make certain that we get that added in after, maybe no, earlier than the second session in January? And possibly. A discussion?
Discussion of this work.
And our ideas. Yes. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me.
That's what I meant, sorry.
I appreciate it. All right. Now, Erin, thank you. Let's talk about family medical leave.
I'm sure you are.
Where it might be a little bit different than what we expected.
There you go.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, you're in here as the city manager. I'm happy to chat a little bit this afternoon about Colorado's paid family and medical leave insurance program. The intention here today is really to give a brief overview, talk a little bit about what the city is already doing, and then talk about the opt-out option and the processes associated with that that's applicable to us. So I'll run through this. If you have any questions, please feel free to stop me and ask. Essentially, family, which is the acronym for family and medical leave insurance, was approved by Colorado voters in November of 2020, which essentially came in the way for state-run paid family medical leave insurance program. Family cover provides covered employees with 12 weeks of partial paid leave to take care of themselves or family members for a variety of different reasons, and a lot of those align with the same things that are covered by the Family and Medical Leave Act or FMLA, which includes injury, illness, pregnancy, and then safety needs, and then standardized types of violence or sexual assault. Leave can be taken intermittently or all at once, similar to FMLA. And it is a state-run program, right? So family benefits are portable between jobs and between employers. So it doesn't stick with an employer, it sticks with the employee. To give a little bit of insight of what this personal leave could be for employees, you can see that depending on employees' weekly wage, the benefit to the percentage of the weekly wage is on a, like a sliding scale essentially. So those that are earning less are eligible for a higher percentage of their weekly wage, up to 90%, with a maximum annual benefit. And those that are making more with a maximum of $3,000 per week are eligible for much less, 37% of their weekly wage to this program. So how this is funded and how it's administered, the, starting in January 1st of 2023, premiums are going to start being collected by the state program. And so an employer pays half, an employee pays the other half. It's a total of 0.9% of wages. Then the benefits are then available to employees beginning in January 1st of 2024.
And this is only if the city decides to participate in this?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make that clear. This is not necessarily the choice that we're making at this point in time.
Correct. Yeah. This is an overview of how the program overall works. The, what's interesting, I think is important is, in this program, the city has a responsibility of the selection and submitting of the premiums through the payroll tax deductions, where the actual administration of the program is through the state-run program. So it's an external administration. The city's responsibility is really the collecting, the funding, the submitting of this. Through, currently, the city of Durango, we offer, number one, the FMLA is applicable to our organization to be a woman of 50 employees, which essentially provides 12 weeks of unpaid job-protected leave to eligible employees for, you know, a variety of eligible reasons. And then we also voluntarily offer full-time employees paid short-term disability and in conjunction with FMLA. So short-term disability is paid out at a rate of 2/3 of an employee's regular wages, and employee can then complement that the other 3, with their own payout to make up for that period of time. For part-time employees, we, beginning in January 2021, offer paid sick leave, in which employees that are part-time and are seasonal, up for one hour of sick leave for every 30 hours of work. They can accrue up to 48 hours in a year, and paid sick leave can be used for very similar reasons to FMLA, but it is a Colorado program that we are operating and administering here. It also includes, you know, coverage or benefit if we're close for a public health emergency, such as like a pain, for example. The estimated annual family cost, so if we are going to base this off 2021, that's our last year of full wages, the employer cost would be about $108,000, and the matching employee contribution would be about $108,000. The annual cost for our current benefits, so for short-term disability, you're in short-term disability, as a reminder, is all employer-paid, there's no contribution from the place, is approximately $100,000. And for sick leave for our part-time and seasonal folks in 2021 actual is about $6,600. Now, I will say that that benefit, as it is a newly launched benefit and availability, there's some education, people are becoming more aware of it. It is relatively low utilization based on our total part-time and seasonal wages. I would expect as people become more aware of this benefit, we should expect an opt-in in that utilization. So, like you said, there is a, we are, there is an opt-out option. So while participation is mandatory for private employers, both local government and even public or private employers that offer a more robust leave program can opt out of family. And that would have to happen via a vote, that moving forward, as we go through this process, that we would put on a future agenda for that to happen. So I think that's important, because we're a little bit different than private employers, where we actually have a choice here. So I think it's really important that we consider, why would we consider opting in or like not opt out essentially? There are some key things here that unlike FMLA, family doesn't require an employee work a minimum number of hours to be able to be qualified. Doesn't expedite a full-time employee's access to benefits, because right now they would have to wait till they measure out to that period of time. It does expand our part-time and seasonal employee benefits a bit. The cost would be easier to project rather than, because it would be, you know, based on our full payroll, not necessarily based on utilization. So that would be, we would be able to project that forecast a little bit easier. And it does remove our short-term disability and our sick leave administration of the city functionality, because that would potentially.
So, sorry, 1,250 hours or 12 months, whichever is less, whichever is more, which is it?
In FMLA, it's in any 12-month period, and the employee has to work at least 1,250 hours.
In any 12-month period.
Then, for only 12 months. For only 12 months. The employer can actually pick a fine period of only 12 months. So in any, so outside of our full-time employees, the folks that are either part-time or seasonal, if somehow they ended up working more than that based on like a draft transfer, or that would be the only way they would really qualify for FMLA based on the hours worked in a 12-month period. And that's defined in FMLA and the provisions of FMLA.
Well, it says or 12 months. So that's what I'm asking, is it 1,250 hours or 12 months is what that says?
That it doesn't require.
Yeah, so neither would be applicable. Currently, both are applicable for FMLA. So neither are applicable in family.
Okay. All right.
Sorry about that.
And do you have, do you have a sense of how many employees have used short-term disability? Or the percentage?
The, that I don't have offhand. I could find that out for us, the total dollar amount.
I remember the $100,000.
$100,000, that's a relatively small percentage of our total.
But that's $100,000 a year.
Yeah.
Typically. Yeah, that's, I'd be interested. I don't want to make work for you, but I was just curious if you.
I think we can, we can get that information to follow up pretty quickly. Now, we have a longer list of why we should consider opting out. So number one, our current employer paid benefits are more generous than the state family plan. Does, it can add an additional deduction to our employees' checks. Now, I will say, the city could choose, even though it's set up that way, where the, any organization could pay the organization half and the employee pays the other, we could choose to pay these employee portions if we wanted. If an employee needs access to the benefits, it's administered through, like the family division and not through an internal process. So we don't really have control over that. I think this is the biggest piece of it all, is that they have yet to really define administrative rules on this whole program. So lots of organizations right now are kind of waiting to see what this looks like and how to administer it and how to submit premiums, that have like premiums, or how the benefits will be distributed in a year when that's ready. Employees have a choice that if an employer opts out, they can still sign up and participate and contribute on their own through the family program. If we opt out now, we can opt in in any future year. But if we don't opt out now, we have to, we have to wait an additional three years to then decline participation.
So we're the bait beta, we're the test group.
So if you opt in, you're opted for three years.
Yeah, you're opted.
Yeah, but if we opt out, and then here we're like, hey, you know, we have some visibility, there's rules and a fence that we can see how it's working out and benefiting for people through the program, and maybe more than official than our internal programs, we can opt in at that point. Just a note here, the, so CML has a running list of municipalities who have made a decision or have indicated what they intend to do of the 95 municipalities that reported. There's one that intends to opt in, that is Creston. So the majority of votes are choosing opting out, if they can. That's really the information that we have today. I'd be happy to provide any other information or answer any other questions. Our staff recommendation is that we would move forward with opting out, because we see a lot of benefits to seeing how it all works out, and we feel like our benefits that we offer right now are more generous. However, what that process would look like would be, although not required, we would inform our employees that if we go to a vote, and then we provide them an opportunity to put a comment to provide their feedback to our council to hear.
So it's the, if we opt out, and an employee wants to do it independently on their own, they're not going to be paying any more than they, they would pay the same amount that they would pay if we opted in?
Correct.
Which coverage takes priority, the states or the cities at that point?
Well, I would say that we have.
They.
I don't know. Particularly because the coverage won't be available to them for a year. And I think those are part of administrative roles we have at White's.
Okay.
Do you see this in your review of the Platinum Benefit Package? As I, as we referred to it, and they, and it was agreed upon that it was, do you see this as down the road being a recommendation that you change?
If I can, it's on a list of things that we're considering as our total compensation philosophy, and this is a key component of that overall compensation for our employees, and it's on our list of items to review. We're currently focusing on the bigger ticket items, including our plan design and our, you know, cautionary for employees and our renewal, because we know that directs bigger costs.
Okay. Any other questions, Erin? And I'm sorry, when will you actually bring this to us for a vote again?
Our intention is in November.
In November.
We do have to have a vote with at least 30 days prior to the end of the year. So it has to happen in 2022.
So it'll be on the agenda for the November 16th or the December, oh no, within 30 days, so the November 16th? 15th. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the recommendation.
Okay. This is great. That's kind of allowed up to 30 minutes if necessary. We can always move things around. But an update on the City-County Joint Homeless Working Group. Jose, get you to start, and then I'll jump in, because I will talk, I will add my conversation with Ann Morris to, from today.
So, yeah, just wanted to have an opportunity to update here on our City-County Homeless Working Group, which is kind of where we briefly been. The county had, I was obviously on last week, the county also had been working on oil and gas regulations, so they have a three or four weeks. So we actually just had our meeting before this meeting around 12:00, but we had an opportunity to meet with them, just updated a bit on kind of where we were in regards to the temporary managed camp. We haven't found any success for any part of at least portion in regards to that, in regards to the council's direction, which was towards the city limits or outside of the city limits. We've reached out, the Realtors have reached out, most people, and they found out that we used a managed camp to comply. So we are, that part haven't found something that has been a work, a work in progress. One of the things, though, that was discussed in the working group as a, as an idea, to look to see if there would be interest in your arena, would be possibly reaching out to some of our religious entities within the city and see if any of them would be open to the option of maybe having one or two of the pallets constructed on a parking lot to kind of look as a, as a, as a test or as a.
Proof of concept.
Proof of concept, to see how it works, to see if it's an ability to where it works out well, and it kind of takes away from the vision of what Purple Cliffs was to what we're actually looking for if we were going through the permanent managed camp location. So just going to see if there's any interest in that concept, to see if any religious entity is, 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 whatever, look at, interested in it. Obviously, before anything was decided, bring it back to the council for that part of it, but just wanted to see if there's any interest on that, to see if there's a proof of concept.
Yeah, and I would add, we estimated that those pallets with the heaters and the weatherizing might run at about 15,000. And they're completely, I don't know if you saw the video or saw them in, when they were at Manah, they're completely washable in between, they come together, I think they can be assembled in very few hours.
They're sitting 15,000 each?
Yes, they are 15,000. But it is not in the look of the tent, it is a look of, you know, and if you go to their website, there are some neighborhoods that are very adjacent to quite affluent neighborhoods. They're all consistent, 64 square feet for two people, there is a 100-square-foot option for four people. And I really do encourage you to look at them as, not that we're in the business of selecting that, but it's a different visual than what we've seen before.
And then I believe, did you make a point to talk to me about the requests?
Yeah. The other request, oh, yeah.
So you're seeking, you, just two questions. So you did not get any interest in leased land within the city, but it's in parking?
Within the city or with outside the city? Within, parking, I'm sorry.
For, for.
For a temporary managed camp.
So no, in it, okay. So no, 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 no feedback on that?
Withdraw. Withdraw, feedback, oh, no. Not doing that, yeah.
There would have been one that had somewhat of an interest, but it would be more of a lease to purchase, and the location for purchase didn't really line up with some of the other things that we talked about. So for a just straight temporary managed camp lease, there hasn't been a willing suitor at this point.
Okay. How many groups, businesses, people did you reach out to in that endeavor?
Pieces of property.
Pieces of property. I don't mind if I go with the Realtors and ask exactly.
And then the next question is for this, looking at the religious, with the, for the pallet, is this, are you suggesting this is just a construction of one?
This would be, to see if there would be any religious entities that would be willing to, to, to put to, the city and the county would look at possibly using that as a way of funding the pallet structures, the religious entities would have a couple on their, their property and see if it, if it works out as a proof of concept.
And they would house.
That's what I'm wondering. So they would also house, construct and house.
Kind of a, we're supporting this group or this, these two individuals or whatever, and that would involve probably access to their bathrooms, things like that.
Okay. So you're going to look into that then?
To see if there's any interest out there, and if there, if there's a term to be interested in being able to find out if there's a proposal that works, and then bring that to council if you're considering it.
Understood.
It's the only, right now, the only thing that we can come up with in a temporary nature that might, might make sense right now, given what we pursued. The other issue that we came up with in my conversation with Ann Morris today, and also then in the conversation with the county, so I want to share this, and I want to share it under new business, our potential new business. So, you know, Ann had written to come to this meeting, and her intent was to get a sense of, well, where is the city council on the Athena Plan that was adopted back in 2020?
Ann had written to come to this meeting?
No, the working group.
Okay, so all of council go to the working group?
No, no.
The group of four.
The group of four. Ann had wanted to come.
To that meeting?
To that meeting. We were having that conversation. There's two things that she, they had invited us to. So, and I, and I said, Ann, if I understand it, your desire is to have a sense of where does council stand on the plan, on the homeless plan that the previous council had adopted?
Correct.
And I said, right now, I couldn't tell you, because we haven't discussed it, we, you know, we talked around it. And she said, well, Barbara, this is the issue, is we need to know basically what the city's thinking is, particularly with item number two, which is now item one, which is the permanently managed camp, which is moving to the termed community. She said, we need to know what you're thinking is, because we can't do our job, and our job is to, you have basically hired us to implement the plan, and we want to know with And we want to know with this, now that we have a new council, what's the level of support for this? And, and she said, basically, we need a real sense of this by November thirtieth. Rather than waiting to discuss into the new year, we need to know what you're thinking is, because that will, and we ended up talking about, without a site, their, their view, and I, I understand this, is we really, we can't go for a city manager till we know what the site looks like, because it would vary, the kind of city.
Go for what?
I'm not asking you, I'm sorry, excuse me, camp manager.
Camp manager.
Because we, we need to know what the site is, it might look differently. So basically, what they are requesting of us is a council's statement of our level of support for particularly item two. Item one is the coordinating council, it's the navigation center, which is showing really good success. But now, item two is the permanently managed camp. And so, then, when we went in with the county, they said, we too are trying to get a sense of, you know, we appreciate the discussion last week, but we, we know where we kind of are as a, as a county on the camp. But we want to partner with you, and we would really like to know what is, you know, your view on a managed community? And, you know, the level of support so that we can go forward. So I'm bringing that to you at both the request from the navigation center and from the county.
And it's, as it relates to the strategic plan that was approved by our, so as I see this, is kind of what would this item look like, this is just me from a staff perspective. Would be staff presenting on what, what is in the strategic plan, what that was adopted, what is this stage two, I believe is what it was called? And getting a feel from the council if that still rings true with the council on that stage two, since it is an adopted plan, it'd be very similar to what we do with our, with our strategic plan to be, you would be updated, take a look at it and say, does this really ring true? I want to make sure to, to caution that, because I, I don't want it to make it sound like we're discussing like the location on edge camp, where to go, and it's more of the concept of this was a strategic plan. Is this something that, as the city council, we're still committed to that, or we see it differently, and it may need to be updated or changed or not?
That strategic plan wasn't adopted by the city and the county, isn't that a community-wide plan? So it's just us taking a look at it and seeing do we still support this plan, but then the county, do they support the plan, and then does?
Yeah, the county's in.
The county still supports the plan, has it, it's no changes, they wouldn't change anything.
That's what my understanding was right.
And then for the council on homelessness, they wouldn't change anything, like it's good just as it is?
I think it's, I'm not sure they have any role in regards to adopting it.
Only implementing it.
Wasn't here, I think they were created because of the plan, if that's the way that I read it. So I believe this plan was with Athena, that was the advisor that did it with the county and the city, and I could be incorrect in that assumption, but I think they created for that, both of you adopted as a way. I recall it being, but I.
And let me, let me kind of add to that if I, if I may, because we also talked about the role of how council might have a different role than commissioners. And so, their, and their level is that they now have the commu, the coordinating committee on homelessness actually gives all of their commissioners a monthly update. And I believe some of them are going to be going to those meetings. I actually said, you know, the way we work, or at least my interpretation of our role, is stay at the policy, and that's why we have staff members going to these meetings. Staff go, they figure out the issues and bring it back via the city manager to us. And so, we discussed that difference in role, they're a full-time job and very different. I said, granted, I think, you know, we get our reports from Luke and from, you know, the police chief or whomever we need. That doesn't mean we can't get quarterly reports and welcome that, but the, us attending those meetings and being there, I don't see it as, as my role, I see it as staff's, council is welcome to have a different view and attend. But I want to address, so that's, they're so engaged that they're actually dedicating an hour a month to those updates where they all sit down and hear, how are we moving on this?
Okay, on that same note, I would, like, I totally support going through, looking at the strategic plan and seeing if we're on board. I would want to get, like, according to council, like whoever to update, like, potential changes or that they would recommend or potentially see coming, like, as we modify, improve the plan potentially, that we're going to stand behind. I would also like to see, because we are coming up against not being able to find any land, that, like, what, if we don't have land, we can't have a managed camp, right, like, that doesn't really work.
Well, we're only talking about temp, we've only been talking about temporary right now, we haven't talked about permanent.
Regardless.
This conversation is only about temporary.
Well, the leasing is temporary.
The plan is permanent.
Right, but regardless, like, we're still running into walls with land, but, but purchasing, leasing, like, whatever, it's going to be the same, you're still going to run into the same, and so I would almost have, like, if we do support a managed camp, because we did support a temporary managed camp, council did, right?
To look at options to.
Yes, okay, sorry, I just want to make sure I'm working these out. And so if we do support a managed camp, what is, and what we can't find land, what is, like, option number two B, like, if that can't happen, what, does that make sense? So I'd kind of like to see those space, if we're going to modify it or make it better, what are some recommendations, and then also, like, step changes.
If I can just tack onto that conversation before I forget. If we're looking at a temporary managed camp site and continuing to look at a temporary managed camp site, one of the things that we're seeing with the closure of Purple Cliffs is the significant burden of closure from a financial and staff-related update. So what I would want to get, what I'm very interested in getting in that is, you know, and I want to make sure that we track it carefully with the county, is an association of, you know, a careful tally of all the costs associated with the closure of the managed camp. Luke, I think in your update that you sent to me, thank you very much for housing, you mentioned we already had, I believe, and I wasn't sure if you had, since you were suggesting that it was already for this year? Or if it was in regard to the closure of Purple Cliffs, but you mentioned forty-five truckloads of waste has already been taken, and I think we, there's still a significant number of truckloads there. And I wasn't sure if that was associated with the closure, or if that was year-to-date for homelessness.
Lucky for the, that was from.
That was you sent, I may, I, I.
Yeah, you suggested you had.
Very good, thank you for that. But even in, not even hence, you had mentioned that there was truckload, forty-five truckloads of waste, which regardless, if it's regarding the closure or homelessness in general for the entire year, is significant.
Yeah.
And so what I want to know is what are the costs that is going, is going to be incurred for the cleanup of a temporary managed camp site? Because if we're going to consider doing that again, we will have the same.
I don't think we're looking at the same.
No, but I, I think that these, this is an issue that in my mind, I think, I mean, you know, we're realizing what, how difficult it is. So therefore, you know, there's a temporary and then there's a permanent conversation, but I do think, in my mind, I'm, I'm definitely, that, that is something that I'm considering pretty heavily as far as the temporary, yeah, sorry.
It was since the closure, just asking thoughts, since the closure, there did forty-five are closed.
Since closure, forty-five truckloads of waste.
And, and I do think with the, the point we do need to keep reminding ourselves is this was an unmanaged camp in the county. And well, even with a temporary, we're talking about it being managed with the kind of all of the responsibilities that go with that, so there will be costs. And, and I do want to update that, help me out here, Jose, they signed that, the county signed the contract with the crew that will be doing the cleanup. It will be taken, it will be, taking it in time, we're not just leaving it there, but.
I'm not sure they've actually signed the contract, I think they, they're going through the process, it's closing, and they have, I believe, a preferred bidder that.
Okay.
Looking to start working this year, because I'm not, there's, there's a big difference, I'm not sure that contract is signed, but it did seem that work would begin this year, and getting that.
I agree with Melissa, though, I would like to see, you know, how much a startup, the maintenance of porta-potties and trash, you know, police, like, whatever, transportation and the closure of Purple Cliffs, so unmanaged camp, how much was it to start, operate and close it? And then anticipation for start operation and closing of managed camp? Because while it will be, it won't be like Purple Cliffs, there will still be some significant costs, especially in operations, that might, you know, during the operating point of it, that'll be more expensive than Purple Cliffs. But then you can't expect for it to be like, does that make sense? So I liked, I would just like that information as we talk.
I think, I think what I'd like to suggest is that there's the four-page executive summary on the plan, and then there's the ninety-two page. And I believe the ninety-two, because we talked about this today in the working group, I believe it, otherwise we, those numbers have been put out before. I'm remembering numbers, but they could have gone up, so between, I don't, the numbers are not in the four-page, here's the kind of plan, but in the ninety-two page, it does talk about startup costs.
Are you talking about the back from two thousand and nineteen?
They'll be, they'll be, yeah, they'll be older numbers, so.
I think they're older numbers. I have four burnout numbers, actually, that Moxie Project asked and gave me at the beginning of the summer that I can forward to you about what it costs to run a managed camp for, they'd use sixty people at the time, so.
Yeah, that would be.
So I can send you more updated information.
And I think those, those questions are, you know, it's also policy, is it, are we thinking starting very small and addressing certain number of people? That, you know, and, and, or are we talking about something like that big? And I, and I think that's what we as a council need to help provide that direction to the coordinating council.
And I think I also need to understand better in this discussion, our, you know, our goals. I think that the county has made it clear that they're willing to donate, I think, up to a million dollars of ARPA funding for purchase, acquisition, lease of land. But what I'm also hearing is that they want the city to take on the responsibility, I believe, of managing or.
No, I, I.
They did mention today that they are, they just, they want to know where they can be plugged in.
Plugged in.
Plugged in, so it's, they want to be a partner with the city that, they did mention they weren't looking to run away from this, they were very interested in continuing this partnership. And really just wanting to know where it is that the city would want them to work and how they'll be working together on this.
Well, so how about the idea of working together on this? I mean, I really, in my opinion alone, this is a community-wide issue, not a city of Durango issue.
Absolutely.
Alone, and so, I mean, I, I feel like it needs to be from the beginning a joint partnership, not that the city will say, we'll take this on, we'll do this, you know, and you provide money. It sure needs to be a joint partnership, and so I want to make that clear, that's my own perspective.
We've been pushing that.
We've been pretty clear on that, yeah.
Nothing in this is us, I think, taking, taking over any portion of it, I think where we're at, from what I'm hearing from them is, the last time the city council, when they realized this was, they go approve this plan. And that was what I would call the last official action probably of the body of this council did on strategic, on this strategic plan. And they're asking, would it be, can the council review that and still see if it rings true to them with this council? Or does changes need, or do there changes or modifications that this council would like to see to that plan, so that we can then have a better way of being able to move forward and talk about how we see that version?
And clearly, I mean, before we go anywhere, there would be like the MOU of how we operate together and issues of all of that, I, I think that's been stated from the beginning. We spent, we have spent, continue to spend time looking for suitable property, and it's just not.
Well, I'm glad to hear that about the MOU.
Oh, yeah.
That wasn't the message I was getting from the last, you know, with the closure of Purple Cliffs. It was more like, we're really hoping the city figures this out, and.
And, and I agree, I think the communication has been, hasn't been as clear. And sometimes it does seem that there's parts where we can see it one way, one day, and the next day it changes, so I think having this unhoused working group is trying to address those, and give clarity from, where are you? And that's what they told us today at one o'clock, was, we do want to work together, we are a willing partner, we'd like to know where the city would like us to, to work together, and how we can push this portion through.
And also if we have a plan and we kind of, you know, rally behind something, essentially that can help, like, leverage that relationship better. The reason too, I was requesting, when I was running through council last year, I remember reading an article in the Associated Press, and it, it was cities, and it was for managed camps, costs of managed camps in the cities. They did a study between all these standards, they had like a whole bunch of them there in this article, and the study said, and this is in two thousand and nineteen, cities played between one thousand six hundred and seventy-two to six thousand two hundred and eight dollars per a sheltered person in two thousand and nineteen. So if you take, if you take middle of the road, and the amount of unhoused people we have here, that's going to be one point two million dollars, and we don't have a dedicated source of funding for that, for, we don't have, we, we don't have a dedicated source of funding for this. And I know that it's not four hundred people, and I know all those things, but this is also middle of the road, this is also a two thousand and nineteen purchase, this is also, this is, there's so many things, and how can I support a managed camp? If I don't have taxpayers willing to, you know, have us use their, like, we have to be responsible for.
Which is why I asked, you know, I, why I ask is it.
I haven't spoken to you, if you don't mind, because I wanted to speak to what you're saying.
Yeah.
There's also lots of studies that show getting people into housing reduces the burden on cities and other communities, and a managed camp is one way to get people into housing. Also, without a managed camp, we also have other increased municipal costs. So we have police, for example, we have parks and rec work, we have other costs that we're not adding up and taking into account. So I think if we're going to look at that, we also need to look at what is the cost to the city to not have a managed camp? Be, just so we have good information and we make good decisions. Personally, I think it's going to be really challenging to find a piece of property. I totally support reviewing the Athena Plan and see where it fits with where we might want to go and where we don't want to go, and make those kinds of choices so that people are informed. I firmly agree with sitting down with the county commissioners and finding alignment or non-alignment on those things and whether we might work. So, that's, is that what?
That's helpful for direction, and what I would want to say, that, that's very good direction for us going. What I want to say is, where I come back to that is, you know, we had that discussion, and, and I have publicly said, you know, this, for me, is not about addressing all four hundred people identified, it's about addressing a very targeted, you know, as we have followed, families, pregnant women, and then a very targeted group of people who are committed to abiding by rules and to moving into permanent housing.
Well, that's one of the things.
So that's when we, but that's something as a council, that may be my vision, but it, somebody else may have a vision of, no, no, we need to take care of, you know, a hundred people, I, I don't know. But that's where I know that the coordinating council is looking to us for what is our, what is our level of support for this, and kind of what do we envision this? And then we have that discussion with the county as, as well.
And I absolutely agree with that, because we do have to set what parameters we're, we're willing to support. I mean, the idea that we're out there looking for, offering for temporary managed camp, yeah, we supported that look, but we didn't have the conversation about what does a temporary managed camp look like either. So we hadn't, we hadn't gotten behind that conversation, we'd only gotten behind, let's go see if there's something out there, and then we'll have a conversation about what that might look like. So I agree with you, and. Sorry, you just distracted me, something you just said, oh, so I firmly believe that those parameters are really important, like, is it just people who we consider to be residents? Is it just people who are willing to be in programs to get healthy and to move on, is it just people who are willing to be housed, or is it everyone? And I, I think that's really important, because the cost will be heavily impacted by those decisions.
And I wanted to make two things, the county has been very clear that they are not going back to any kind of unmanaged camp situation. What I would like to suggest from what I hear, and I want to see if there's consensus around that, is we probably invite Ann Morris from the, who's heading up the navigating center to either our November one or our November sixteen meeting. I'm looking to Luke and Jose, we'd also need to address those questions. In, in between time, we will have read the reports and have our kind of questions in mind, but then to look at, to answer the questions, the cost of establishing the unmanaged camp, the more. Well, Melissa did ask the question of what do we, what did this experiment cost?
And the closure.
And the closure, so, and then a more realistic, what is the cost around current day dollars? Probably pulling in proxy, project Moxie, proxy Moxie's numbers, so that we have a sense of what it is we're talking about in terms of time. And then hopefully, we might also have some at that, one of those meetings, information on whether NINA or any of the organizations are willing to consider a very, it would be displaced, because no one entity would take it, but possibly providing shelter for one or two, if it's a family or an individual at their site in a structure that can support a dignified life, you know, as much as you can.
So what you're suggesting this is. So what you're suggesting this needs to take place before the end of the year? And you're suggesting the first two meetings in November, is that?
Before November thirtieth.
And one of the thirty days before the first of January, essentially.
She, no, she basically said, I need to know where you guys are at, at the latest by November.
Without adding on another meeting.
I, I think that we, and I need to take a look at the study session calendar, but I would look at, you know, the study session on the eighteenth.
The fifteenth?
Fifteenth, yeah, like just looking at time.
Right, I know.
First meeting in November, I don't think you would be able to get.
We can't.
Time to get the information, and I also want to make sure that the council has enough time to read the Athena strategic plan and go through it. Not saying, it's anyway, nobody has, but just to have some good time to review it, so that it's not feel rushed if we're going through it.
Well, you guys have time, stuff.
We have time, that we're going through it, we have new staff members as well that have been here, to kind of go through, get some of the information in trouble.
Very good point. Can we please recirculate that?
Yes.
Council and more than ninety-two page document?
I, I do, I do not know if that, if that would come to a vote or to consensus, so I do want to just be clear that, if you can anticipate anything coming up.
I don't, I don't think that there could be a vote.
Okay, I just want to be clear that we're certain.
I think you're about to be, it's such a big topic.
It's a consensus.
Discussion and going forward first before bringing up anything for a.
Good.
And now.
Well, I'm not sure we have anything to vote on, but I just wanted to make certain that, in, in your conversations, maybe with Anne.
So to be clear, we don't have property here, so we're just talking those off the grid, about the plan, both of us.
Is this something that still rings true for us, or as the time has gone by, do we, does this council see it differently?
And I believe that they had, you know, information in that plan on, you know, it was, it was called a managed camp. And I think that we may have more information on what we support as a managed camp, and so we can get into some of that, right?
Especially since it's a community now instead of camps.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I also think this is an important enough topic, and the timeframe is, is important enough that I would, I would support another meeting if that was necessary.
I'm going to suggest that I don't, just because of the workload that I'm seeing, that staff is trying to manage at the time, it's on the.
Well, they still have to do the same work.
On a national.
It's when we have a meeting.
They're finding us adding on a lot, and it's just been a difficult, it's been, I think, a tough.
I'm willing to, I'm willing to postpone organic management yet again.
Yes.
I'm happy to postpone organic.
I think we'll, you know, remember fifteen.
Okay.
And see how the discussion goes from there. At, at that point, there could be determination if there's a need or a necessity to it, but it allows time to kind of really synchronize our, our conversation, talk with Anne, also talk about the need to absolutely state, to state what you want to state, but also make it succinct, so that we can have time to have a good discussion, because I think that's really what we're looking for, is the council having an opportunity to have, for you all to have discussion, you all to be able to answer questions, or ask questions and have them answered.
And, and again, I, I think, no, you guys all hear it, but to the point that we can get our questions formulated and, and shared with the presenters, I think that'll help everyone with the time, and I've seen Luke shaking his head, so he'll help corral all of us.
Those are, ever had a great presentation, yes, it's fantastic.
Good, good. We're exactly where I had hoped at thirty minutes for this discussion, we're going into the ethics. I think it, I, we, I believe it will take more than the thirty minutes allocated. If you're comfortable, I'd like to proceed, but I also know that we may be getting into the think of things, so I would also entertain a five-minute break if anyone needed it. Five-minute break?
Sure.
So we will start at, at three fifteen for a five-minute break. Perfect. Thanks all.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I don't want to stop.
I was going to definitely do.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Welcome back. We are going to go around for introductions as well, and I will address that. The city manager has stepped out, this is not his bailiwick, so he has stepped out of this meeting. And we have Suzanne sit here as the staff liaison. So Suzanne, just so folks can recognize your voice, voices of who might be speaking, can you guys go around and introduce yourselves?
I am just a senator on the legal board, here for the city and my board.
Good afternoon, I'm Laurie Mindker.
I'm Catherine Burgess.
I'm Jay Egan.
This is good, Susan.
I'm Ted Hall.
And it's so good to have you here and to see you all again. I run into several of you in the, in the city, but others I haven't met, so it's a pleasure. I think you may know all of us, but I'll just go around again first. Barbara knows where they.
Melissa, you so, Jessica.
Perfect, so, Jay, you're the chair, correct? Thank you. So, and Suzanne, how would you like to proceed with this discussion? And, and I do believe we want to allow a lot of time for, for questions as well and comments.
I would like to defer to the chair for a moment, just to provide and overlook a few introductions of prior year, and the board has been looking over the last year to make some proposed changes and recommendations to the council. It's been going for quite a while. To kind of work to Jay again, it'd be fun. I have some of the areas that the board has been reviewing that we'd like to propose and discuss with you.
Yeah, thanks, Suzanne. First of all, on behalf of all of us, we really appreciate the opportunity to be here and having you all tell us what a wonderful job we did. As Suzanne referenced, approximately a year ago, we started internal discussions about potential ways that the ordinance and the process might be improved. Think back, that twenty fourteen is when the original ordinance was created, and then in twenty seventeen, there was an earlier update. As the board continued to get more experience, we had some observations of ways that perhaps the process could be adjusted to improve it. And of course, we've heard some feedback from all of you, because you've experienced it as well, about some ideas and concerns about how the process works. So what we've got in our package is seven recommendations for consideration to update the ordinance. One of the concerns we heard about was the cost and the timeliness of the process. So one of the key recommendations is there's a first line suggestion to essentially shrink the ordinance down to focus on ethics, as opposed to. You found the irony for you. I, it's a bit more subjective, it's a little more fuzzy, as to what even a description really may look like in practice. Whereas the ethical side is more specific, more objective, and more easily looked at. We think that shrinking the, the focus of the ethics board down to the ethical side would also respond to kind of the cost side. That some of you have raised concerns about. The challenge of that, though, is that it would leave the conduct side to you folks as a council. So figure out if you've had issues like that amongst yourselves, what kind of process would you use to manage those? We did not think it was our purview to dive into those and make suggestions to you on that part of the process. For city employees, the other hand, there already is a process for these kinds of things that are all conduct related. And we would assume that that process would continue until the city manager and his staff to handle those kinds of things.
If, if, would you be willing, if council asked, if council was interested in providing some process, where you would see how the code of conduct could be handled by council?
Absolutely, sure, yeah. So the second area that we received, some of you folks, was the idea of instead of having a five-person citizens board, as is in your case today, is either a judge or a hearing officer. In your package, Suzanne had done quite a bit of research for other entities around the state, Colorado, Denver, and so forth, of how there's a structure, and candidly, if you look at it, it's kind of like all over the map. So there's a, there's a fairly diverse menu out there of how these things can be handled. One of the things I did was go back to look to the newspaper articles in twenty fourteen. I don't think anybody were on council at the time when this thing was first thrown out there. And the original proposal was for a three-person board that actually consisted of all the city employees, the city attorney, the city manager, and the third official. When the public hearings were held on that, the response from the community was, no, this needs to be independent, it needs to be citizens. So I think as you consider this idea of a judge or a hearing officer, maybe that element needs to be thrown into consideration, to see if that kind of step backwards in some people. We're not certain that that, that, that doing that necessarily achieves faster process or less cost, because depending on where a hearing officer, a judge would sit, and how they would be compensated, and so forth, wouldn't necessarily be less expensive, it's kind of hard to say until you get into the details. So we had several other recommendations amongst our seven, I'm not going to go through all of those at this time, and just open up to the dialogue that folks would like to have, and see if any of the other board members would want to add anything that I said. Or none.
Questions and thoughts from council?
I think the idea of separating the ethics and code of conduct is really the problem. I think you're right, I think they're very different animals, and they're, they function differently, and they visualize differently and everything. So I really support that, and I think, this is just my kind of off-the-cuff thought, but as far as the judge or hearing officer, if all you were doing, and I don't mean all to make it seem smaller, but if your responsibility is ethics, I think the hearing officer may not achieve the goals of the vision of the thought, so I'm kind of supporting that in that section. So, but, having said that, then we are left with that elephant in the room of the code of conduct. And how does the council deal with that? I think it would be very, very challenging for the council to be the judge, the jury, the prosecutor, and the defendant, yeah.
If, if you look at the system as it's set up now, misconduct by an employee or contractor with the city is dealt with by the city manager. It's conceivable, I guess, that there could be misconduct by board or commission members, which would fall to your responsibility through us, I guess, ultimately. But by and large, it's going to be interpersonal relationships with the council that's going to be the thorn. And under the code of conduct, if a case like that is thrown to us, all we can do is make a recommendation to you as a council that there has been violation. And then you're going to have to decide what to do with it. And I would dare say, in council situations, that in probably ninety percent of the cases, you're going to be witnesses to the conduct that's being alleged to be a violation, because it typically happens in a meeting. In terms of the interpersonal relationships and the conduct. So I don't know that it's a necessary step to have our board review the whole thing, go through hours and hours of looking at meetings to try to figure out what the complaint is talking about, which is another problem we've experienced, and we don't want to experience.
And I'd like to address that.
We've addressed that in our procedures, we basically said that if, if someone alleges that misconduct occurred at a meeting, they've got the destiny on the tape the exact moment on that tape where it occurred. Because we had one, I think about fifteen different meetings, and we sat down, everybody took three, everyone home and watched them all, tried to figure out, okay, what's he talking about, what's she talking about, where did he say? And then we reconvene with our best guess of what the complainant was trying to address.
Oh, we had no cost to that.
What's that?
No cost, so, you know.
Your time volunteer effort.
Yeah, this time.
Yeah.
It was one of the places.
That's, that's in here or there, but we've addressed that in our procedures, and I think it'll be in the complaint form. In a reference meeting, you've got to tell us on Saturday, the moment you're talking about.
That's great, but if we separate the ethics from the code of conduct, that you won't have that issue.
No.
But part of the challenge for council, I think, is particularly if you're going to be working with someone for three more years, it, it makes it really, really hard to be the judge and jury about how all that works, so the, so I personally would like, I don't know if it's your group that's the right group, but I think we need some guidance on how to set up a process so that we avoid that. Because that's part of the problem, is you may not get a willingness to, to forward a complaint when it's the people that you have to work with every single day, and that's, and we're all elected officials, we're not, like, no one's our boss, you know, we're none of that kind of thing. So that's very challenging.
May, may I actually say a few words, if I may? So let me acknowledge what I consider the elephant in the room for me, which is, I'm here as a counselor, but I'm also someone who was accused and brought, a case brought before the, the Board of Ethics that was found to be groundless. So I'd like to just, this is a rare opportunity for you to hear as a councilperson how I view this, and yet also as someone who's gone through the process. So I would like to say that, and this council may not realize it, I did provide recommendations after going through that process in writing, to what I think. And I will start by saying I have the biggest fear that this process has been weaponized. And I think it started being weaponized with the case that was brought against me. And I afterwards sat down, I want to share this so that you all have the same permission, because I want to get to where we can actually get it improved in my mind. I think it's very important in deci- I think it's very important in deciding whether or not to even consider a case, to recognize that once out there, it's not undone. If you Google me, you will see that I had an ethics claim brought against me. And I still work and tried to get business and that comes up. So those are the consequences of taking on a case that may be groundless. You can't undo it. I want to raise that because going forward, I want us to be aware of that thinking. In my case, I said to one of the complainants, you know, this could have been solved with a telephone call or coffee. We could have solved this over coffee. Or you could have called the city attorney and he would have told you what constitutes confidential, or we could have called the city manager and he would have said this wasn't confidential. Instead, we have attorney brought in, ten thousand dollars. You guys give your wonderful volunteer time and I recognize we've got lawyers, we've got PhD in ethics, we've got people who've worked in, in the area. So I value that. But I also want to say it's brought forward and it takes two months for, and you're giving it your best time. So I appreciate that. I don't want to, I just want to make certain that there's even a process to say, no, this isn't appropriate for us. This isn't appropriate for us to take on. Or as I recommended, have you spoken to each other? And if you're not comfortable raising it, because some people are averse to having difficult conversations, maybe you need a mediator to bring this up before it even goes there. So that's one. I just want to say as we think about this, not you in particular, but as this body. The second is the confidentiality of the person who's been accused. As I shared with this board, I had a constituent call me and say it's all over Facebook, another city, another city council member saying that this is going on. So how do we protect the person who's accused? And whether it's not, I'm just sharing my experience, but going forward, how do we ensure the confidentiality of this discussion?
I think it's very difficult unless you control both the complainant and the other party. And we didn't. I can pretty well assure you that whatever breach of confidentiality occurred in your case did not come from this.
Right. I don't believe it did either.
And
but I would welcome some recommendations for helping to, helping to try to tighten that because it's going to happen again. This is going to come up to anyone. And I would want to make certain that, that they have, they're protected as well.
So if I can add, I think that the ordinance is clear and in terms of protecting the confidentiality of everybody in the process and it's, David says, you know, we don't have any control over what people do. And, you know, I think you were as frustrated, I'll just say frankly, as you and I think the rest of the council. Because the way that the ordinance is written restricts the actions of this board. And it comes from a presumption or intention for the entire process to be one that is collaborative. And so I think over and over again, what, what we were doing without authority to enforce or for someone to take an action was trying to make those recommendations and hope that the parties involved would agree to this collaborative process. It clearly was not something that came to resolution in that way. You know, I don't know how many times we've sat and looked at how, within the confines of the language of the code, where, where do we have the authority to dismiss something? There are steps, prescribed steps that had to be taken.
And so that's my question is maybe that, that portion of the code, I mean, you're talking about separating it, but maybe you do need the option to say, no, we're not, we're not taking this on. It's almost like a Supreme Court. You don't have to take it, the case, you could say, you know, this is the action. And I recognize you don't have it. So that's why I'm asking is, are there, are there ways to say, we're going to re, we're going to, we've reviewed it and we're going to require that you two talk to each other? Or we, or we're going to review it?
If there was enforcement authority in the code, certainly that could be an option. I think that's where, you know, after hours of deliberative discussion, I think we've come down to part of the solution being that this is complaints of conduct, really as David said, I mean, it, and the cases that we've looked at, it comes down to interpersonal relationships, which is not an ethical issue.
Right.
It is a legal issue. And so separating that conduct piece out from this, this board, I think is a start in the right direction.
And I would agree with that, that breaking it down. I do, I do think we do need to talk about one area of confidentiality that the board did breach. And that was in my situation, when David mentioned my name in a public meeting that you were having before you went into private conversation. I know, it was a slip of the tongue, but it's, it's a problem. So, so I just do, did want to address that. But I think that the ethics and code of conduct separation is huge. That, that solves so many issues. And you guys can work on the code, on the ordinance, like what do you need to have that ability to say,
Exactly.
we're not going to take it or we're going to do this, we're going to do that. You can give us some recommendations. But also we need, what do we do with the code of conduct stuff? Do I just, I mean, because there's no enforcement, there's no consequences, there's no anything.
May I also add?
And maybe also it should be, I don't know.
Yeah, please. I wanted, wanted to add, go ahead Melissa.
I want to first thank you guys for taking the time. I mean, I know, we all know without mentioning any names, that there's been several things that have kept you busy. So I really appreciate your volunteer time and effort for all of it. And recognize that a lot of it is code of conduct. Well, sounds like pretty much everything, I believe.
Mine was an ethics claim.
Related, oh, yeah, which was dismissed as groundless.
Groundless, but it was an ethics claim.
But it's interesting because I have not been involved in those thankfully. And I can tell you though, that as someone who's witnessed it, you're right, we hear it. We're privy to all of it. And as a council team, I think we have options in how we address it at the time of occurrence. I think some of that could be potentially that we have better training on how we address that as a team. And options that we have to, to handle code of conduct in meetings at the most professional level that we can as people who aren't professional really, you know, I mean, we too are volunteers basically. So, so anyway, I, I appreciate it. And I also want to say that observing the work that you've done and recognizing that you're reviewing as an ethics board, code of conduct issues and also recognizing that despite the amount of effort that you've been put into it, nothing's changed at our level. There was no action taken to work to solve the issue. So the, the relationship issue. So therefore, and I'm not blaming anybody for that, it's just fact, they continue to this day. So I think that we recognize it's not working. The way we have it is not working. So removing it, to me, I would support it because of that. I haven't seen it work. I haven't seen it become effective. It would depend on the parties involved potentially, but we could also always be in this situation because you don't have an enforcement mechanism, you can't require things. And I don't think necessarily that you should be in position to require things, especially elected officials who've been elected by the people. There's two options. They either don't get reelected or they potentializing, you know, in some cities, in some cases, I'm not suggesting it would ever happen here, but recalls happen. And so I, I believe are the only avenues to force. So I, I support it. I support where you're going with the removal of code of conduct because I haven't seen it be beneficial.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted to note that one of the recommendations I had before is to give the board the authority to mandate.
Yes, exactly. I saw that.
We can suggest it.
So.
Well, can I jump in?
Please, please. Oh, please go ahead. Sorry, I didn't see that.
And then I want to address mediation.
Yeah, because that was one of the comments I wanted to make. First, thank you. I haven't met a lot of you, so it's nice to meet you. It's interesting to see, I don't, I know that I have experienced this on council, not me personally, but three ethics claims come through on counselors, either by counselors or past counselors. Is that, is your increase, right? Yeah, that's what I, I figured. I wasn't sure. And you're, I think a lot of it is personality. And in April, you know, it could be a shift and it could be better or it could be worse. And that's, I think that what is hard is that every two years you have, I mean, obviously anyone who's been around the city council has a pretty strong personality in some ways. And if they're not willing to be part of a team and to, like, if we have a disagreement, go to the last point and talk about it, if that's not that, that person's personality, we do need to have tools, I think, that are mandated for us to work through. Like Melissa said, you can't force, like, unless it's a recall or you just don't get reelected. Like, that person shows their colors as their counselor and who they are and how they behave. And hopefully they don't get reelected or they get reelected, depending on the people in it or not. That's kind of the course. But I think if there was mandatory, like if I have an issue with Melissa and I bring it up to whatever the code of conduct is, it is mandatory that we go through this mediation with this recommended person. Does that make sense? Like, I would love to see that. Because then it, no matter what happens, we might never not use it for those two years, depending on if everyone's getting along great, but if you have to, it's a tool there for us to use. So I find that.
The problem with that, what we've seen, is that both parties have agreed to have it.
Yeah, but if it is.
We did not have that.
If it's mandated.
Right now it's a recommendation.
If it's mandated.
I recommended it, but it's not mandatory. And, and so I, I just, and again, it's just one of those.
How do you force that?
And.
I just don't know.
I don't.
Censure. I read that and I.
But also part of like you sign, you know, code of conduct, code of, you sign when you become a counselor, this is a medium agreement.
You take a pledge. You take a pledge.
Get along with someone. And whoever, if it's an attorney or a board or whoever recommends mediation, you do it. I mean, you can still be stubborn and not listen. I mean, or, or. But yeah, I think we're all people and, you know, it's hard. But I support, I support the removal of the code of conduct for the, for the board of ethics. I'm just saying that that will make your job much easier. It is not subjective. It, you know, it's a clear path. And so I support that. And then, you know, in what way we go forward with the code of ethics, I think that that's maybe something staff can help us with. Or, you know, provide recommendations or you can provide your recommendations and then staff can help us, you know, go forward with that. I mean, it would be super beneficial. And I do think that there needs to be changes in mediation. Because I do feel like in those situations, that is going to hopefully help us be able to work together. I one hundred percent believe that if we could go through an effective mediation, we could work better together. Like you and I will always be able to work easy together, right? Like it's, that's our personality.
I think it depends on the person. I don't, I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong, but I'm just thinking the issues we had and that the lack of willingness to participate. And so maybe if you force a person to participate, maybe that will change that person's perspective over, maybe. I mean, I don't know.
Tools.
My experience is very difficult to participate in a mediation and not participate.
Right.
It's just incredibly awkward. And I guess their personal limitations do it.
There's some team building sessions that we have read about in, or that ask for, yeah, ask for information on how those proceeded and if they seek to solve any existing problems.
Well.
If parts were discovered, they have.
No.
They, they have.
The difference is if the five of you go through a team building exercise, it's always the ability of the person who really needs to be building the team to just say, well, they're not talking about me. But you go into the one-on-one mediation with mediator, it's very difficult to say this is a problem. And it's all very interesting.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, because, yeah, well, that's very interesting.
Yeah.
Well, it also gets really frustrating for those who aren't having interpersonal relationships to go through the team building needs and not have them be effective.
And not make them in the first place.
Kim, I want to say something.
Yeah, thank you. I do want to say something about some of the current issues that we're experiencing that we discussed last study session, code of conduct, possible violations are occurring out of the public eye. And they're occurring in emails among council and among staff. And so I think that that's where the challenge comes in when you talk about not reelected or recall, because the public doesn't even know about a lot of this. And that's, that's a big part of, of the challenge. And mediation, you know, and I'm going to speak to the elephant in the room right now. I'm going to say that Councilor Bosman's filed two different incidents of claims against me for ethics violations and code of conduct violations. And both were dismissed in some way, shape or form. And both of them had multiple accusations of improper conduct. So it wasn't just one thing that I did. It was multiple things supposedly I did and they were both dismissed. And in that conversation, the challenge with mediation is intent. Why are you going into mediation and what do you hope to accomplish? And under the current system, it was set up that how, if the mediation is successful and it doesn't define successful, that impacts your decision on the ethics claim. And, and that's really not appropriate either. So how do we separate?
Well, it impacts it in that it results in dismissal.
Or not. What if, what's an unsuccessful mediation?
Lack of agreement.
And so then you not dismiss it because of lack of agreement, but it doesn't seem.
Then you haven't had a successful mediation.
It's not defined. So I'm just saying it's not defined. And it, and that's really for someone who was involved in it. That's like, I don't know what you're expecting out of this outcome and what I'm supposed to do to get a good outcome. I don't even know what I'm supposed to do. And so I think you need to be really clear about what does that mean? And it, so code of ethics violations and mediation are different. That's like, you know, okay, there's a property line right here. We want to decide on that. You guys mediate where that goes. But code of conduct, having a conversation with someone and not communicating well is, it's very, very hard to change that.
It's very, very difficult not to communicate too.
Yes, exactly. So, so how, how do we deal with that? Do we, just because we, there's, even censure doesn't mean anything. You slap the person on the hand at a city council meeting. That really, because that doesn't mean that they're going to change their, their way of being. It's been communicated, and when I was just speaking about this outside of the public eye, it's been communicated three times. And yet it continues to happen. So when you, I, I'm just, this is kind of a philosophical question. It's not really like, how do you fix it? Because I'm not sure it can be. Maybe it can be.
Elections, yeah.
Yeah.
But if it's out of the public eye, how do people know?
Well, a lot of it's not out of the public eye. There's a lot that happens in public. I think the public's informed.
Yeah.
I mean, it's all we can do is the, you know, keep reminding, you can't request that, you can't request that, you can't request that. And I mean, we're elected officials and it's not just here in the city of Durango. Unfortunately, people everywhere nowadays, if I don't agree with you, I have to hate you. Apparently. Like this is, it's like the way of life now. It's so sad that we can't like disagree on something, but then like go forward and make it the best that it's going to be regardless if I agree with you to get there or not. And it, it is, I don't think, like I, I was elected, Olivia was elected, you were elected. Like I don't know what I'm doing all the time, but half the time I might say something and Jose asks to send me a reminder saying, hey, Justin, oh, sorry. I of course handle it different, my mistakes. And, and everyone does handle their mistakes different. And so it's, it's hard to say that, you know, he shouldn't be a city councillor, he should have some reprimand, more reprimanded. Yeah, that because of, because of something he keeps doing. We just don't, don't allow it, right? And I think that that's kind of, I, I, unfortunately.
I think the challenge comes in when, when staff's morale is affected by it and when staff doesn't want to deal with it. And I think as staff, as city manager, manager, we are all as a body, as manager, we need to support him. And, and I think that there's some times there where he's not being supported. So it's all about, it's, it's more complicated. Among us, I agree with you.
I want to call on.
Councillor's support.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Can, can I call on Pat? And can I also be clear that we are not talking about future cases? We do also have to be very clear that we're talking about improvements to the, the process. So I, I do want to put that. Pat, did you want to say something? And I also would like to ask something of you guys.
First of all, I really appreciate the fact that you see the issue in not separating now the code of conduct from the code of ethics because. from the code of ethics, because I was on the original board and that's been, in my mind, a problem from the beginning. And so I really appreciate the fact that you're seeing it now as an issue, because in the beginning, I thought it was an issue, but until we saw it in practice, um, that's when you learn, you know? It looks good on paper and then you try to work with it. I also wanted to let you know that I hear the frustration and I understand it to some extent, because I, then I have been a legal advisor off and on for about, I don't know, twenty-five years to another governmental ethics commission. And I have seen complaints, and I've just been code of ethics filed as weaponizing right before elections. And I have seen a lot of confidentiality, which is a bigger problem with that governmental entity than it is here, because it's so much smaller and tighter. And unfortunately, I don't think there's any way we can control it, I think you did that too. Um, we can recognize it when it happens, but in terms of keeping it from happening, I don't think any of us can do very much, except be aware of it and then it happens and do our best to kind of keep it from happening. But it will happen. And it's unfortunate, because it affects.
Yeah.
I, you know, I, I can only imagine how it feels.
You can't take it back.
You can't.
May.
And you go through a lot of anxiety and you lose sleep and, and I'm really sorry that that happens, but I haven't learned any way to do anything about it.
Well, I, I'm going to come back with two things. I would like to address the counsel that you've, you've received, because I, I want to say that I listened to the, um, the, your meeting in which Counselor Bosman's had filed, and we, we don't need to, it's in the public domain. You, his name wasn't there, but it has been public. All the listings of, here's all the meetings. And I heard you say, these are three hours long. And I was very surprised that your counsel did not say, you don't have to do this, you make, go back, you make the person who's filing the claim say specifically where it is and what took place. I was amazed that your counsel didn't provide that to you. In fact, I even called our city attorney and said, wow, they're going to actually go back and listen to all of this, rather than making the person who's filing the claim say specifically what happened and how? And so I question the counsel that you received, because that drew that out a lot longer and put much more work on you than I would have thought appropriate. So I want to, I want to state that, that you are being served, but I need, we need as counselors to make certain you're adequately served. And, and, and for the public needs to understand, we have a city attorney, but whenever a counselor has a claim brought against him or her, the city attorney cannot represent the counselor. Uh, the, the board gets a taxpayer-funded city attorney, another taxpayer, to, to work on this. And then any person who has the claim needs to hire their own attorney, should they wish to. So I want to make certain that, when I heard that and you chose to do it, which I think because you felt you needed to act within a certain timeframe, but I would have expected some kind of advice that said, no, go back, make this very specific, so we know exactly what we're working with. And I ask you, was that a reasonable statement to have expected?
I think yes. You know, I mean, if there were a litigation, there would be a filing of a motion for more definite state. Just tell me what you're really talking about. That's not the setup we have here.
Well, that's one of the changes I think it would make.
Yes, it is.
Mayor, we have seven changes here, I think, due to time, we need to kind of address those.
Yeah, so I.
What hindsight, it's twenty twenty, I know, which you would have asked.
But where I did want to go with, I understand that, was the opportunity to actually not take a case. And where I didn't see that in the.
Well, I think maybe we want to add that on, I don't know, I just, after you guys spending an entire year coming up with these seven recommendations, I'd like to address them in our time together here. And I know there's a lot of frustration around this issue for many of us. Um, and so it's easy to get derailed, but I want to try to bring us back to this.
But I do want to give you the option that you need to be well-served by your counsel and that that's an option as we as counselors, we need to know, we don't get to evaluate the service you're being provided, right? Because we're not in those meetings, but there should be a mechanism for you also to say, you know, help us out here. So that's where I'm trying to go, is you.
I heard that.
Yeah.
So we can add it on if you'd like or something, but I think it's, um, you know, I just.
So I think we're in agreement on the remove the code of conduct from the Board of Ethics review.
I would agree, I think we've got four, four together, absolutely.
And I also believe that, um, you know, the question of the judge or the hearing officer, um, my own view, you know, and I, I raised that question, should it go to an ombuds person? Because I, I ask it. But I also am aware of the background of the, and the caliber of, um, experience we have on this board. Um, so I, I don't want to lose that capacity, I just want it to be, um, what you need to be effective.
I think if we separate the ethics, which I totally support.
Okay.
This too, kind of becomes a loose point, unless it comes up later in the future.
But they're talking about code of ethics, we're not code contact.
Right.
Because we're not, that's maybe all, right, over code of ethics? And, and, and so do we need a judge or hearing officer? Yeah.
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 Okay.
But it really requires, I'm concerned about collegiality, and I have just learned so much from all my colleagues here, every time we have a case, there are always more nuances and sides and things to look at when you, one of the ones you have realized, and I think it really is a benefit to be able to bounce those off people. And then when we, at one point, we really didn't have any cases for a couple of years.
Right.
And it was suggested that maybe we did need to meet. And I said, well, no, that we need to meet at least quarterly, because we need to establish a collegiality. It's certainly been true this last year.
Yeah. So if it's separated, do you, do you recommend on a judge or hearing officer? Or do you want to see how it goes with the, you guys?
With you guys handling it.
And then you handling it, and then if you feel so, in the future, you can bring that back forward.
Well.
I, I support that.
The one thing I would just add is, I, the one time I've interacted with the Board of Ethics is, when I myself had a question that I didn't want to get, I just wanted to try to avoid.
Yeah, you wanted an advisory.
Yeah, and that was very helpful, to have you guys kind of review the situation, and, okay, here's, here's our opinion. Um, I would encourage people.
Here's how you do it.
Yeah.
Well, and I did that too. And I, I felt the same way, like, it gave me guidance.
Right, here's, and here's what we used, yeah, that was the recommendation. So anyway, that's another thing that we should all remember, is a very big tool as elected officials to have people who are, you know, going to give us their honest opinion.
Well, number three, the refusal of office in certain circumstances, I absolutely support that.
Yeah. Like, that's hand in hand in our group, but I think, here's a lot of the state. Yeah, okay, I agree with the office.
Absolutely.
Where they're, where they're working with the people that are involved in it.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
I also support it. Item number four, I have a question about that. Would you also propose changes in the mediation? But would you also look at having folks talk to each other before they file a complaint?
And this only pertains, it only.
Ethics, it would only pertain to ethics.
But this would be under the, or it's the.
No, it'd be ethics.
Oh, ethics, sorry, yeah, 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 I think, sorry.
So you're suggesting we, we would somehow know before they file?
No, I was wondering, um, you know, you could go mediation, or you could say, have you tried to, tried to talk about this? And, and the reason I, I say that i- is, I worry that we get to the point where we're not even going to talk to each other about our, our views of what may be ethical or not, and we're just going to go this path of making a claim. So that's my concern here with the mediation. Is there an opportunity to consider? I'm not, I, I want you to, because you've went through it. Is there benefit in, in considering some kind of discussion, again, before it comes to a full review?
You started talking about the ordinance itself being mediator and it was provoking three legal.
You know, I, I think, uh, I think if you ask the question, I'll use, you know, if you ask the question, have you two talked about this? Because you think it's a violation and maybe the person has a different explanation.
The ordinance does provide for flexibility for the board to use what's characterized as an alternate process.
Right.
You attempted to use that, uh, not very successfully, but I think that, I think the authority already exists.
Okay. So it's something that you, it's in your toolbox if you choose to use it.
But if you want that before the complaint is filed, you're going to have to change the process. You're going to go with something like a notice of intent file.
It would be after the complaint is filed.
It's in me for them and say, okay, if you guys talk about it, if that doesn't work, then they file. But we wouldn't know about it until it's filed.
So, but that might be an option. I'm, I'm looking at the changes to give you the permission to not even take the case or to say, you know, we want you guys to talk first before you bring this, and if you can't settle it, we want you to bring it up.
I don't know, so I, I'm concerned about that.
Yeah.
Because you've got power differentiations going on here, you have all sorts of weird stuff happening here. And it might stop someone from filing an ethics violation if they thought they had to go talk to the person first, because there's lots of reasons why that would be horribly intimidating. And, and it may be a foolish claim, but let, you know, let them decide, because I, I don't know, that, that's.
I, I ask it, because I'm just trying to, to see all sides there.
Okay, so are we on four or are we talking about five?
I'm talking about four.
Four.
Four, immediate.
So I would just pile onto that, and I think, I understand what you're suggesting and what we're trying to do about, but I think it creates a challenge of, which is.
Sure.
And that, or to anyone's ability to file it properly.
Okay.
And I think it's going to be fact-driven. I mean, if, if I think somebody's investment, I'm not going to have any issue.
Right, understood. Understood.
So, you know, in some instances where it appears that, uh, maybe it's an ethical violation, maybe it isn't, depending on the facts, I can see that it might be appropriate. But I think in, there are, there are such things, it's clear cut ethical violations, that come before boards. And in those cases, you're not going to mediate.
Under, understood. I, I, I raise it because I'm thinking of the future, I'm thinking of the future.
The question is, should there be a change to direct mediation from suggesting? That's the question, and this would be under ethics complaints. If, and if you believe that's, I mean, it'd be, how would, yeah.
I mean, that really is more conduct.
It's the conduct.
I, I just don't.
Yeah. So it doesn't really apply then.
Excellent, excellent, okay, that's, yeah.
All right. And then in the delivery method, this is your procedures and my question of you being served appropriately.
So for me, the challenge was, I would get it, I would get something that says she must reply within five days. And I had to reply back, what date and what time? Because if I even missed it by five minutes theoretically and I didn't know what it was, I could get thrown out, unresponsive. So I think that there needs to be a lot better clarification of, of the requirements. So what date, what time, what date, and I'm going to hear back from you? A lot of communication, I never knew when you were having, you never even notified of that. Um, so I didn't know when to pay attention and when not. One time I was listening from the other side of the world, so I couldn't hear what was going on. So it would be really nice to have a better system of communication with both the complaint and the respondent, so that they are on, they have the same information, same knowledge about what's going on and what's happening. That makes sense?
Since, since, um, since those cases were considered, all three of the cases we're talking about, we since went through a process of adopting the procedures. And I think addresses a lot of that, along with these further modifications that.
Okay, very good.
Excellent, okay. Yeah, see, and that's the, we didn't know.
Nine-page document, they're completely.
It might be helpful to have us, um, maybe see what you change, so that we would be aware of that.
Change much, just kind of, yeah.
More detail.
Well, yes.
Um, non-appearance, that was pretty specific, or pretty straightforward.
Worried about the fact that the code says maybe dismissed, you didn't give us any standards as to can you do it and can you not. We think if somebody files a complaint, then it's worked till here, it would be good.
Unless they're, unless they're given, because they're somewhere else, or they're having a baby or something, they're giving them a reason to continue.
Yeah, it's just a little expedited.
On the, names of complaint before. Warnings, uh, on the complaint, I'm still on number six, regarding confidentiality. Is that a case of, are you thinking of?
That's number five.
Number five, excuse me. Um, I did want to go back to that. Are you thinking of, you know, somebody files a complaint, you're going to emphasize that the person filing the complaint needs to keep this confidential? What, what is your thinking there of resolving that?
Yeah, so with the procedures, we specified that the documentation would have those kinds of warnings on it. Understanding that when ordinance already stipulates that at a certain point, it goes from.
Understood.
Public to public, so just depends on how long, like, uh, whether you can keep that all the way to.
And the challenge always is, you can't control people's behavior, like you said, right? And so what's the consequence if someone does, I mean, and you have to prove that too, right? I mean, it's, it's challenging.
To complain it outside the city government, there isn't much.
Right.
You could, I guess, put a provision in your city code that makes it a violation of code to disclose information regarding your complaint prior to the time the board has finished the screening process. Then at least on the complaint, we could say that the disclosure of the information regarding this complaint, prior to the place it's screening, is a violation of the city, blah, 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 which is ninety, unless it changes ninety days in jail or a thousand.
Yeah, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Is it so?
I made a, a point there. Um, I, because I recognize, as you said, Pat, things will, but, but if, if there's at least something in writing, it sounds like, that says this is the expectation. So you're suggesting a change to the code on that?
I don't know that there's a need to change the code, maybe the complaint.
The complaint form, okay.
I think that's. Code's already got it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think by changing the complaint form, it at least makes it more specifically clear.
Okay.
Yeah, because the complaint form has nothing on it now.
Number seven, I believe we, because we did, went to five and then I had brought us back.
We have an amber rule going on.
Um, number seven, you know, we had talked about this years ago, um, about the appropriateness of counsel interviewing for the board. And so, um, take us through just briefly your recommendation here, because I, I think it's something that, as we're going into this, counsel will need to actually kind of.
I think the recommendation is to, to have a process that involves current board members.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, my experience was when I was interviewing for, is that was the process. Or just suggesting to formalize that.
And I think it's even more germane, when you think about the amount of time and where the focus is with this posture. Um, and there have been instances in the past, um, since fourteen, where counsel had an undue influence in our commission of who was selected or perhaps reappointed to the board of ethics, I think. Particularly, if we're going to be in a conversation with some recommendations about how counsel can police itself, um, if you will, then I think, um, having some separation between your appointment of code of ethics members from the council.
So you want to screen incoming members and provide a list of candidates to city council? Do you want to select again? Are you suggesting that you would select, recommend an appointment?
Make a recommendation.
You would make a recommendation? Okay, that's all.
Similar to how the city manager does applications and still brings them to council for approval.
That falls out of the forty of, of admissions, yeah.
Jason, I think that's basically what that, yeah.
It just hasn't been formalized.
So formalizing it, I would support that.
So would you interview?
Yeah.
It is.
That's what they did last time.
Yep. And then the ones that they supported came to us.
So, so something you didn't recommend, and again, where I want to try to get is, how can you provide feedback on the counsel you're receiving? I mean, I'm, it, good, bad, indifferent. We, we hire a con, in some cases, we hire a contractor and we don't know if you're being well-served or not. And our city attorney wouldn't know if you're being well-served or not, because they don't get involved. So is there a need for a mechanism for you to actually let us know?
Well, or maybe they recommend the attorney who gets involved, rather than the city just automatically hiring someone?
Yeah.
Maybe it comes from you.
It was Dirk.
Yeah, Dirk.
I, that's what I mean, rather than coming from the city as a recommendation of an attorney. The attorney recommendation actually comes from the Board of Ethics.
So is there not already an existing mechanism within the city to evaluate the performance of contractors?
It's, this is a difficult case because the city attorney, because it's involving counselors, the city attorney is not there, not in it, and I'm not aware of how any evaluation would take place here. They don't have any, there's no information. All I, all I had is what I heard on the, the way it happened.
I understand that, I guess that my question is one, like, assuming it was a different kind of contractor of service to some other part of city government.
They would evaluate, yes. But because of this particular nature, you are, I would say, unique.
There's no RFP going now. There's no contract that says you will, you will build that fence to these specifications. So it's really, really hard to evaluate your performance without knowing it. And so let's avoid that and, and have it be someone that you all would think would, would serve well.
And do you think that future councils, or future boards, that mayor may not have the experience and exposure that you have, will be qualified to select?
I, I'm not liable this year.
Right, that's my point. I know now.
Right, that's.
Well, that's a question too. Who doesn't lie with?
And then.
If the city is a.
Yeah, no, I.
If the city is appointing the attorney that's going to give you advice, and it's a, and it's a complaint against a member of the city, whether it be a counselor or whoever, that feels to me like there's a little bit of a possible conflict.
So that's my concern is how to make certain you're well-served. And in my case, when I heard you all willing to listen to something, you know, well-served by your advisor who might have said something differently. And so, and being respectful of your time, it was my.
The advisor, he didn't say anything different, it didn't come up.
Right.
Because he wasn't there.
Ah, okay.
Through the screening process, it's okay.
Okay.
Fifteen meetings. Some of us looked at people, and Jay just said, let's break it up.
Yeah.
Take a look at it and come back and reconvene.
Right, and that'll be corrected with the applica, I mean, you correct it, but I recognize it was a significant amount of time and.
And I thought it was sort of instructive just to go through that process with all of the information in context. I mean, I understand that I'd rather have it all sort of parsed out. Context is important.
Well, look at it from the person who was being accused, who had to listen to every single one of those meetings. You guys got to break it up, mine, you. Fifteen meetings, three hours each, and because of circumstances, I had about four days to do that. That, that's really not appropriate. And I requested of you, once you had listened to it, to please tell me where you thought the issues were so that I can at least filter. And that didn't work. So I, I see, I see this being as, as kind of, because otherwise someone could say, here's a year's worth of needs, you know? You need to listen to every single one of them. And what would that do to the process?
You've changed that already, right?
You got to change, so.
Not just that, all we can do, you talk about, like, are you serving or not serving? If you get an attorney in front of you and you work with them, you don't know if they're effective or not.
Right.
Now, it's coming back, I'm just getting feedback. And then either you guys are advocating that you're going to recommend a different counsel if a situation like that happens to come up again, which now that we're separating athletes from code of conduct, hopefully that becomes easier and everything is just more streamlined. So I think that it's kind of.
Yeah. I have, I have one more request just for you to think about, and you may not solve it today. And, and Pat, it's to your.
Before, we haven't actually answered the question of the appointment.
Oh, yes, please, thank you.
So we decided for a further discussion, you guys want to go chat about it and come back with the recommendation, or how do we?
Yeah.
Yeah, I am too. With current position of the board, I think we do that.
Right, so that's something to consider, okay.
And I think.
Going forward, it's not, you might have to do it.
Yeah. So what I'd like to ask you to, to think about, and again, I want to acknowledge your work. And this has been an unusual year, and this is an unusual case. We are counselors and we have also been accused and, and been, and been dismissed. I always want to make that clear. So that is unusual. But I think it's an opportunity for feedback in a, hopeful, in a constructive manner. What I would like to ask is, as you think about it, Pat, it's to your, your comment. You want to hear from the community, and there is intentionally no cost to the community. But there's also full impunity when you make an allegation, right? You can do it with full impunity, but you can't take back the person who's been necessarily accused. So on a larger scale, how, how can we use that, this process judiciously, but also encourage that kind of de-weaponizing, if you will, if, if there is a concern? And Pat, you're the one who said you've seen it weaponized. And so how can we work to, if it is weaponized, or has been weaponized, or is the potential to be weaponized? How can we work to remove that from the process? And, and I don't have an answer.
Well, and I don't think we can.
You don't think we can?
I don't think we can because part of the weapon is the conversation about what the whole situation, and that has to do with that confidentiality and everything else. That's part of the weapon, you know? And, and as a public official, we're putting ourselves in, in harm's way, if you will. And I do think that's kind of one of those things we, we deal with. And if, if there's something we want to do about it, we hire an attorney and we sue. I, I, I'm just not certain that.
I don't know if you can.
What do you guys think about that?
Mm-hmm.
And I, I don't remember if we have a retaliation provision, but it is a code that I'm used to working with. We have a retaliation provision. So by trying to prove that you filed it because you wanted to retaliate versus you had a good faith plea. But I mean, I think the code for getting out of the case says you have to have a good faith plea, and you can't do it for, you know, to harass or intimidate or retaliate, all of that. But that's a hard thing to prove what a person's intentions were without them admitting, yeah, I really wanted to hit after her.
What is harassment?
Catherine, I'm, I'm looking at you with your background in, in Dr. Ed and Ethics. Any thoughts? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I want to benefit from it.
Very well, he says, part of officials who've gone through that whole process, we have put ourselves in this position. And I mean, we, we don't want to solve personal relationship problems.
Right.
We really, you know, I have enough trouble dealing with my neighbor. You know, it's, it really comes down to helping people be civil. And civility is, like, certainly might be very popular at this stage, so. This, it's an interesting conversation, and I think that's, that's well said. And it makes me think forward, you know, looking forward as mayor. Pro temp, for example. And, you know, when you lead meetings, you know, options you have around ensuring civil discourse amongst your, with your group. And options you might have to, to, to stop conversation that may, may not actually be going into civil rights. You know, and, and that is the training that I.
One of the things that we've developed that we use now, which I didn't know I was assistant a year ago, and a year and a half ago, and if I had, I would have used it, but we didn't have that kind of training in Robert's Rules of Order.
Yeah.
Is point of information and, and point of.
Process.
Process, yeah.
That's the whole basis of Robert's Rules of Order.
Yes.
Is people need to have rules in order to see. I think that's where they have something to point to and say, no, you're out of order.
And now with that, because you can say that, point of process or whatever it is, and then it goes back to the presiding officer to acknowledge that, and then you say, sorry, you're done, move on. That was not a process that we had in place. And after the last ethics complaint, I went through the Robert's Rules of Order, and I said, how do we deal with this? And I said, if this is what we can do, absolutely yes. So those are the kind of things that we.
Frank, when you're having cap in the situations we got, that was, you know, whereas the mayor typically has the authority to shut this kind of down. You were the target.
Yes.
And it becomes very difficult.
It's really hard to run a meeting and be a member of the meeting.
That is my first thought, is that she's a very appreciative lady. But you have discourse also in any council, you know, and also, you know, with, with all members. I, I'm going to be very frank, when I was first on council, I had discourse with another counselor. And, you know, and publicly too, very difficult. So I think we all experienced it, and people handle it in different ways. Ultimately, you know, I ended up in a very good relationship with that council just because you kind of go like, you have difficult situations, you disagree on things, you get angry, but you move forward. And people respond differently. And, but I think that any counselor, despite the fact that in that situation, you had a person who was running the meeting who was also in, having, having a person of, a relationship conflict. But also, any other counselor can, according to what we've learned, say at that point, point of process. And then the mayor then responds, you know, but, and, and so, but, but.
We didn't have that a year and a half ago, or we weren't using it a year and a half.
No, what, 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 what we, what we each didn't have, and I take, I take credit for it too, we all should. We didn't take the time to learn of, we learned about Robert's Rules of Order, which we are using to, to do. And I was even in my third or fourth year on council, so, but I didn't have that, and I should have taken that time because I think it helps us in running more efficient, effective meetings. And so I think that's our best avenue, really. And we've used it, potentially.
If I may, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Lloyd, go ahead.
Thought about kind of circling back to.
Going back to the.
The lack of penalty for false complaints and this idea of weaponizing the process and what to do. When I first came on to this board three years ago, and there weren't any complaints, I was like, well, what if, like, should there be something that we should be educating the public about? And I think we've been so consumed honestly this past year and a half with dealing with the complaints, that that educational piece is fallen by the wayside. But I think that there is an opportunity for this board to educate the public about, well, what is ethical behavior? What is the code of ethics? And not to, I remember Catherine saying, we're not in the business of generating business. And agree, we're not. But I think for people to understand and make that distinction between ethical behavior and disagreement.
Exactly.
And I think that, I think goes a long way for interior people when they're filing a complaint, understand what they're, what they're doing.
The seriousness of it. May I?
I sense your frustration in not having this conversation long time ago.
Yeah.
And we, we've been urging a lot. So I think it's, you know, it, it's just all to sort of make those conversations happen.
For sure, we don't have all the time to hear that, this conversation.
Well, so.
May I, I appreciate that comment of also the length thing. May I just give what I think is a summary of where we're at so I can make certain we're clear? Because I think there are some actions.
If we do that, there was one additional item that wanted to throw that.
Oh, yeah.
Came up after we filed this over. The new boards and commission guidelines states that chairs are supposed to be exposed for. Our ordinance actually says that our chairs are supposed to be.
Okay.
Not that I want to continue the chair forever. I was kind of the last standing in this chair. But what we've experienced is that it takes you about a year to figure out how to do it. And then all of a sudden, you have to get off. So I don't know if you want to consider exceptions for this board, maybe we look at it for.
Yeah. Definitely.
Do we want to just reach that then?
Okay.
I would support that.
Yeah.
So let's. Yeah. So, so Suzanne, I want to make certain, as we're doing this, and I want to make certain I'm hearing. So we're all in agreement on removing the code of conduct from the Board of Ethics Review and Enforcement. And we recognize the issues of, of holding accountable the code of conduct, but that is not your jurisdiction going forward.
Although we may ask them for advice.
We may ask for advice. We do support having the code of ethics remain with you. So that's where we're at. We do support city clerk to recuse themselves and for you to hire, looks like, would be undertaken by administrative, from the independent attorney. We do support allowing you to direct mediation as a.
Yeah, except that that mostly applies to the code of conduct, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So that, that one we have to come back to, right, okay. Right. There will be a change to the application process. It will call, this is just, I'm coming through, it will require specificity in what is, what would the, the accused, the accusation. It will require some statement about confidentiality, confidentiality, and the seriousness of this allegation. And once done is not, I don't know how you're going to do that undone, but the.
Well, and that they were going to provide us with their detail changes.
Right, and the detail changes to that. The dismissed to, to non-appearance is clear. The appointments, we support you interviewing and bringing that back to us. Then on the last, we also support the change for Board of Ethics. And then on the last question about you two, those with legal experience, helping make recommendations for who might serve as your counsel when it is not the city attorney. Because in other cases, if a council member is not involved, I believe it is the city attorney who brings this to you.
And I don't think it's just the two of them, I think it's the board.
It's the board. It would be all five of you making recommendations for who. Are we all in agreement? And I want to make certain counselors all in agreement with that.
Thank you.
This has been, you know, and, and can I just say, this is not an easy topic, right? I mean, look at us, we're back counselors with first, and so I want to say it's not an easy topic. But I think there's a commitment to, to making it a stronger and better and more effective for any future case brought before you.
So thank you for that. I think, no, I can't speak for everybody on the commission, but I think that, you know, this has been a difficult period of time. And you've had conversations about, you know, the elephant in the room. And so thank you for being willing to have a public conversation about that.
The elephant in the room. On that note, are we finished? All right, let's.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'm going to stand and stretch and say goodbye, my folks, and we'll bring in the next group. Thank you, guys. Let's just say we're good.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. All right, thank you. Catherine, can you say your.
I'm just happy to be here.
Thank you. Yeah. We're ten.
My dad.
I'm glad you're there. Yeah. Thank you. And I think it was. Yeah. I have ourselves.
Thank you.
They have a new way for you. I'm interested in the role of the examiner.
So.
Or that.
Yes.
We love. Y'all, just thank you.
Thank you.
Got it, guys.
I know. You finish my share. For years, I'll tell you that. So, guys.
We have the first.
All right.
I'm just like, be careful before I do anything.
Okay, folks, thank you. All right. So I'm just going to come back with, why isn't that democracy at its best? We have conversations about things that we need to address. And I appreciate, I want to just acknowledge my counselors and their commitment. I do, I want to acknowledge that.
And thank you for the attendance.
Um, Jose.
Hello.
Back.
I'm back.
Back in the.
About parking.
Let's talk about. Let's.
Something that doesn't generate.
I think it's just too small.
Let's, let's talk about parking.
Okay, the reason why Wade has been hiding from everybody, parking.
And can I just say, there was a bunch of smiles there, all right? Let's just kind of, you may not be seeing this if you're listening or anything, but we're, it's 4:30 in the afternoon, we know we're going, and we're still excited to hear about parking, yes.
Absolutely, absolutely. So Scott Shine is going to jump in and lead this discussion here, leading introductions. Sarah. Sarah has a baby girl.
Oh.
Yeah, but do you know her name?
Uh, Ellis, Ellis Rose, Ellis Rose.
Ellis Rose, oh, I like that.
So she's definitely uh a really good movie, good episode. Wish her the best.
That's great.
And with that, I will kick it to Scott, who I'll give a little bit of a kudos to because, well, he's not, he's in developing, but just being able to step up on short notice to to help out Sarah, it seems really amazing. Just kind of goes. Scott, can you jump to you?
Uh, there aren't many things more important than updating, having been probably.
Yeah.
Jumps ahead of that, so we'll give Sarah a pass. Um, this is a project that we've been working really closely with, um, the transportation department. So it feels pretty natural to step in and help. We've been involved. So they have in our office taught me from sort of that small business liaison role and communicating to the business owners has been really involved in the effort. So it's been a good sort of interdepartmental collaboration so far. Uh, we're very fortunate to have Walker Consultants leading the charge. They're nationally, if not world renowned, as sort of parking experts. Uh, they have an office in Denver. Uh, Drew and Christine have been helping to keep us organized and keep us on track. I I did just want to touch before I pass it over to them to do the bullet presentation. Um, we emphasize that this effort hits on the infrastructure goal of the strategic plan. Um, but it has a lot of crosshovers, you know, it affects affordability. And I thought just this the sentence that Christine is going to share really hit on that. So I just wanted to read that to kind of set the stage. Uh, it says, a successful forward-thinking parking and transportation system considers the community's broad strategic goals related to diversity, equity, inclusion, infrastructure, affordability, and economic vitality, environmental sustainability, responsible, and transparent fiscal management, and supports enhanced livability throughout the city area. So who knew parking could accomplish all that? But it's certainly wrapped in and it's something our office hears a lot about, obviously, Wade and his career on the street, deal with every day. Um, so we're excited to get a broader vision and a plan moving forward for our parking system. That's your move, Christine.
Thank you, and please just let me begin my scene. You know, we really appreciate being able to share where we are in this process with you today. And we're really looking forward to bringing the final plans to you to consider. December sixth is what we're targeting for that.
Okay.
So today, what we're hoping for is some direction from you on are the strategies that we have identified aligned with the city's goals? And I won't read them all onto you here, of course. Uh, but I did see that much of these were reflected within the recent public budget survey. So still very much supported by the community. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel of these. And the icons that you'll see here are going to carry through to each of the strategies that we are recommending at this point to kind of give you an idea of how we see those only during those longer goals. We do have uh five categories that we've put these strategies into for buckets, if you will. And the intent of this is not to have all of these strategies implemented today. This is, as Scott mentioned, a long-range plan, so that we can take some of the perception bias out of decision making and have those decisions really focused on, has the community and Durango um approved of in the past in terms of the value products that are in place? That way, city staff can make data-driven, data-informed decisions that are responsive to the issues that the various neighborhoods are going to face. And they don't have to come to you each and every time, so that process is much quicker, so that there's um a bunch of solutions put into place for the community forever. So being right into it, since we have a little bit of time here. Um, the first one in our communications is we are recommending just increasing the communications, both the frequency and the type of information that's being shared with the public. We have here an example from the city of Seattle. They put out an annual report that goes neighborhood by neighborhood and outlines this parking utilization and how is that going to affect the management strategies that they use in that area moving forward. Those strategies, similar to what we are recommending here, are already prescribed. So it's very cause and effect at that point. It takes a lot of emotions out of parking, because as we're alone, parking is a very emotional issue.
Unbelievable, yes.
And of course, we have signage and repainting, uh, which seems very simple and straightforward. We want to just provide some updates and clarity to the signage that's out there and it's the same. Um, I think I can move.
I think just minimizing the very part of the. That.
It's very odd, it also trends.
May I make a a comment on the signage of the way?
Absolutely.
When I was first elected, one of the things that people came to me a lot about was, we know where the parking lots and things are because there's signs, but we don't know where we can park our longer rigs or our trailer and and have a place we can park where we fit and we can still access. So that was one thing that seemed to be missing, just as a.
Absolutely. Um, and one thing I didn't get to mention here in the beginning is, especially since we're running up a little bit on time for today, we do have a summary document that I'm going to send to all of you.
Oh, great.
Points that may get in our vision repainting and getting more information out there is specifically for the RVs, for the vehicles, trailers, or the oversized vehicles. There are places for them, but does that mean we need to pay that number?
And will you be making a recommendation about the size of our signs as well?
Yes.
Oh, nice.
So I actually wanted to bring up this example here.
Yeah.
Spot number four, one of the first things you see as you're driving by is permit parking only. And if you put this in the context of how quickly you're moving through traffic, especially in congested traffic, that's about all the average person is going to be able to.
I can't park here.
So we want to update the signage to be a little bit more um informative on that quick view. We do have the universal P for parking, if you will, like download, but that could be raised up a little higher, so it's more direct line of sight for those drivers. But on this, one of the items that we're recommending is consistency in signage. So if you zoom in, the detail down here is actually in conflict with the information on the main sign. So we just want to be a little careful in the future as those are being added. Um, you know, for someone who is is understanding, we we realize that they're talking about the five o'clock hour, the six P M. hour button, because there is the minute inclusion there that can have some questioning, okay, what about between five and six P M.? Do I need to pay? There's also the terminology, permits may be purchased at the transit center window. For a lot of individuals, a permit is a monthly pass or a prepaid pass rather than a per-pass for that A or a transient. Just updating that in a normal feature.
Like having a parking machine, so you can just get a permit right there instead.
Which I believe the transit center does have.
Hour amount, you have to go inside to get a part of the passage of transit. Originally, all of these were monthly, but we do sell daily because it's a transit. There's no room on second half, because those are fully wired.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
With our bump outs, did you feel as though you could see the parking signs? Okay, that's good. I just wanted to get that. All right, they would be visible, you thought they were visible to the person driving. Okay, great.
Our next classification is transportation demand management. I'm not sure where your familiarity is with this type of parking management strategy, but with TDM, as we refer to it, the goal here is to influence behaviors, not just related to parking, but transportation as a whole. Because realistically, parking is just one piece of the whole transportation network, something we really want to drive home with this plan. We also are recognizing that the city is undergoing the multi-world transportation update. And while that hasn't come out yet, we don't want to be in conflict with it. So these are focused solely on parking that relates to TDM. Um, and how it can support that vision moving forward. So with the transportation movement strategy, this is definitely a long-term recommendation that we're making. As the city starts to expand some mobility options, this would incentivize the use of alternative modes of transportation. So you might have a key pass that you can park off-street maybe ten, twenty days out of the month. On those other days, you already have a transit pass that's paid, could be like shared credits, car share credits, um guaranteed ride home, that would incentivize you to use those alternative options. So it's, there's another option, our strategy, and I will speak to you here in a moment on flexible parking permits. But as of now, with the monthly permit program that's in place, once you purchase that permit, you're actually incentivized to optimize that benefit and continue to use it every day. So there's no incentive to go to those alternative modes of transportation. We're then recommending a parking ride express. And with this consideration of formalizing some parking rights, whether through public-private partnership or cities that take on, I do understand that there are some informal parking rights, uh, in the just of town. Um, so just looking to, as I mentioned, formalize in that process. Uh, you know, more in the short term, if there's not enough demand for this type of service immediately, this could, in the interim, take the form of a manual program. So you don't need to have a full shuttle. We're also recommending looking into more share mobility options. And the example that we have here is actually from the community of Aspen. Their uh car-to-go program offers, I wouldn't say eight, hybrid or fully electric vehicles that anyone over the community can check out. It's really supported a lot of residents going towards a car life or a car-free lifestyle. Or just making it easier to take transit down to, you know, work or the office that day. And then if you have some errands to run afterward, you can grab your own vehicles and complete those errands under my home, and it can be dropped off then, anywhere within the parameters of that. There are third-party vendors that provide similar services, and that's not some kid in the city who looks forward to administering on their own. Special events and park access was a consideration that we heard a lot about during our engagement process with the community, specifically around the trailheads. There's quite a few that have some parking issues, whether that's available supply or the spillover into the communities around there. And of course, there's the parking pricing or time limits that you can use. But on the other hand, there's also the option, and I'm just going to do a number of examples that are there to be equipped with. Providing, you know, one example is the city of Boulders Park to the Park Shuttle. Where throughout the summer, specifically in the weekends and on holidays, it's a free shuttle from their downtown parking facilities up to the open space. And they've seen a lot of success with that. In terms of the special events, that same shuttle can then be rented out to larger special events so that they can provide approximate for referral parking, excuse me, with that shuttle connection. And that's a revenue stream for the city to supplement that park-to-park circulator.
On those, going to the the trailheads, would the shuttle run like every hour or something like that? Or, I mean, I'm just curious how the frequency, because if you want to use it, I mean, not everyone's going to go hiking at nine o'clock in the morning.
Absolutely. So we've seen communities that will adjust that throughout the day. Usually during the morning, there's higher demand, dips off through the late morning, you accept them again in the early afternoon. So they'll tailor it to run twenty, thirty-minute cycles during those peak times, but then dropping down to an hour.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And just, since we're just going back for a second too, I I was interested a little bit more on the dock bike share and dockless bike share and scooters, e-scooters conversation. Did you hear from people that they were recommending that, that they were saying that we should look into that more?
Not necessarily the scooters. Uh, there seems to be some hesitation about scooters in Durango.
Here because you've seen them before?
It's just an option.
Okay.
It is growing, so that is something that you could consider in the future if there is a growing appetite for it. Um, the bike share, absolutely. Definitely think there's a strong market for that here in Durango, especially in the suburbs.
Right.
And I do want to acknowledge, um, there is existing bike share programs here in Durango. There's private operators.
Right.
We were lucky enough to be able to rent some of those e-bikes and they.
Private operators with e-bikes, right.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so there's an opportunity there to partner with local vendors.
Mm-hmm.
Interesting. And do other communities, they do they, they don't allow e-scooters on sidewalks, do they?
It varies, but predominantly.
Predominantly bike lanes.
Bike lanes or within the traffic lane, they're bound by the same restrictions that someone.
Mm-hmm, okay.
They don't allow that, but they comply.
Like the one-wheels, the electric one-wheels that are always on the sidewalks.
Mm-hmm.
I'm a real child.
And I must say, a lot of the concern with e-scooters, especially on the bike or on the sidewalks, is this pedestrian conflict potential. And you can require the vendors to geo-fence those scooters, so that if it is in an area where it's not allowed to be, people come to a slow stop and cannot operate it until you walk it out of that area. It's quite effective. I personally just ran into it when I was down in Texas a couple of weeks ago. Didn't realize I had entered the area. Couldn't figure out why I couldn't get the scooter to keep going, so. This thing's perfect.
Yeah.
And they're quite heavy to move, so there's.
Yeah.
Some disincentive to disobey those.
Interesting.
Um, moving into our technology recommendations. Our first one, and these are actually some examples from private law here in Durango, is moving as your meters and their useful life, moving towards a multi-space meter. We're considering that option. Some of the advantages of this is rather than the cost of replacing each individual meter, you have fewer meters on the street, which in terms of, you know, the clutter on the street.
Oh, my God, yes.
The ADA accessibility that gets impeded.
Yep. For someone with a mobility impairment who's using a assistive device, each one of those individual meters is just one more obstacle. They might have to move around. Um, it opens up the ability for individuals who are community hurt, like there's more movement access. And visually, it's more appealing as well. Uh, there's also some benefit there in terms of your inventory of replacement parts. Especially the last couple of years, we've of course seen some supply chain issues. And just like any other piece of technology, there are some parts to individual multi-space meters, so it's only cut down on how many parts you have to have on hand to keep these going. Um, with these smart parking systems, they are not cheap, but there are some efficiencies that you can gain. And as I mentioned, maintenance, but also enforcement itself. So one of our recommendations that I'm going to be coming up to is potential to expand the management throughout Durango, not just to downtown, the surrounding areas. As you do that, of course, there's going to be the need for more enforcement. With some of the technologies that we're recommending, both multi-space meters and as I get, as I look at to the license plate recognition, that will allow each enforcement officer to cover a greater area than the current handhelds can provide. So it just kind of offsets some of those additional costs. A big one, and one of those we have identified is kind of low-hanging fruit or equipment, is offering a mobile payment integration with just your existing meters even. This is the option that a lot of people come to expect now when there's a parking. I think it's pretty exciting to learn toward influencing other bases.
So we've gone through the process with smart meters and mobile payment and all that in the past, and it hasn't been successful. Now, maybe the concept was ahead of the technology and it wasn't, didn't work well, but I think we definitely want to have proof of concept going on before we.
But I'd also like to add, what I see is folks who are visiting, who maybe lived elsewhere, they expect the technology.
I expect the technology.
Yeah. So they expect the technology. And and that same thing, I'm just going to say, I've I've actually said, I'll give you a quarter if I had one, but I don't, you know.
You have to have an app.
Yeah.
Not anymore. There's actually some vendors out there now where you can text a code and it will just, it's a one-time payment tied to your license plate. So it's come a long way, just a few short years.
Yeah.
Lots of.
A way to win.
I was just wondering, because I was like, God, I would so annoyed if I download an app before I get parked.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, but that sounds easy.
I I think of the easy pass, right?
My partner by the quarter.
Yeah, no, I.
It's great, and then it also offers more payment options for individuals. It's great, and then it also offers more payment options for individuals.
Right.
Can be especially beneficial for your underpaid or unemployed communities. They may not have credit card options, but they might have a bank or.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Just a great option for me.
Interesting.
Knock it out.
Specifically in the long term, we are recommending moving towards license plate recognition supported enforcement. I really want to stress here that this is not intended to take any of your parking ambassadors or existing enforcement officers off the street downtown. I really have to commend Wade and his team and all of you. You have a best-in-class enforcement team here. And now they're very well-received by the community. We wouldn't want to take that away.
And they love our dogs.
That's what I care. So with the handheld option, rather than going through and inputting each license plate that they come across, it's really just walking down the street and scanning it. So they're limited really just by their own walking pace, rather than that input. With the vehicle-mounted options, that might be more appropriate in some of the other areas of town, rather than downtown, where you have timing limits or perhaps a neighborhood parking permit program to allow movement between those neighborhoods that's efficient and then route those neighborhoods where they really don't need to have that person-to-person interaction. Because I doubt someone's going to come running out of their house as busy as the parking master on the street.
Yeah, because there definitely are ambassadors downtown, that's for sure.
Now we're getting into kind of the bulk of what we heard about. So there is some parking nominations available in some areas, specifically within the lots where we saw them, multi-space meters. This would just be formalizing that and expanding that. There's many ways that you can go about doing this, whether it's QR codes, a code that's input into the meter itself. And it's really going to depend on the type of technology. With the mobile payment integration, that is a system that can very easily incorporate parking violations. So this might be a retailer providing their customers thirty or sixty minutes pre-parking. It could be, you know, Wade providing a staff number with a day pass. Maybe they only work a couple of days a week. So it's an option to supplement Wade parking needs for employers, but that's something that they would choose to do.
And you're suggesting parking violation, like in our downtown area?
Yeah.
With that, for retailers?
If that's something that they would be interested in, yeah, setting up an account so they can provide that for their customers.
Do you recommend that because people appreciate that, they like it?
They do. Customers love it. In terms of what we hear with paid parking from businesses, if you charge more for parking, the customers will look down. Studies have shown that generally it's not the case. It occurs by extensive evaluation of tax revenue compared to parking pricing. What we actually see is as parking prices increases, sales tax revenue increases. So I don't want to say it's a direct correlation, but there's a very strong correlation between parking pricing and sales for retailers.
Any issues to give parking? Do you remember the.
Yes, right. So would you suggest our underutilized transit center? Because I asked Wade, this is seventy percent vacant. Would you suggest focusing on park in the transit center and this, and will validate your parking? Rather than just anywhere? Would you, because that's an asset that we have the statistics, it's not being used.
Right. So the parking transit center is going to be most effective in meeting your longer-term parking needs. Where we see validation being well-received is for customers. And ideally, what we want is those close and convenient on-street spaces for customers.
And they only get the parking validated if they buy something, right? Or spend a certain amount of money?
That would be up to the account.
The who?
The account holder.
So the business.
So the business buys the parking.
Yeah, because they're paying for the parking.
They're paying for the parking.
And they're giving it free to their customer.
Whether it's just a general space on Mayan.
We have to talk about.
Am I not?
That's what I'm saying, they would get it validated.
By going in and the, like potentially like, let's say you have lively or something. Fifty dollars, all validate your parking, but that's her policy. Because she's in, in a way paying for the parking for them.
But is, is, does she have a sprint spot?
A designated spot?
No, no, it's any.
It's any space within the on-street system.
So you have the validators are?
Yes. And that can only be managed through the backend system, with each person having a code or QR code.
Okay.
They can generate a new code for each customer. That way, there's no potential for, not saying any employee would ever do this, but to share that a whole company's stuff.
Okay.
With that, we are recommending moving towards a enhanced demand-based pricing model in the downtown area. I would say enhanced because there is some existing demand-based pricing going on where the further out streets are priced slightly lower than the very core spaces along the main.
Yes.
We would exaggerate this and potentially put in some more zones, so there's more differentiation. There's a lot of available parking in Durango, which I know a lot of people don't want to hear.
Yeah.
It's just not, everyone wants it.
Right.
So this is a mechanism to change behavior. Colorado is beautiful. We all love going hiking. But for some reason, when it comes to parking, it needs to be right in front of where we want to go.
We discussed that with our rec center. Is if people can't park outside the front door, they get really upset. They're like, you're going there to workout. What's the problem?
One thing with this though, is that it does provide the option for that front-floor service for those who do prioritize that in terms of their parking experience. Or maybe, you know, I'm willing to park a little further away and pay a little less. Or I'm running late for a meeting, I need to park right on front and want to pay that higher price. So it just gives options so that everyone can make a decision based on which.
Are you making any recommendations on pricing?
Not right now. So with these recommendations, during the next two nights, we're going to be meeting with the Multimodal Advisory Board, and we have an open house.
Yeah, for sure.
So during those meetings, that's what we're going to be asking for feedback on. What about these strategies can get you guys excited to use that? And make you guys happy during it goes, community. We don't want to click implementation or specific recommendations out there without the community's buy-in. Because if they don't support this, it won't be successful.
Right.
So in every stage of this, first identifying the, you know, opportunities and challenges that exist today within Durango, we have the community. And then from there, we've identified the pulmonary strategies. Then with them again to say, okay, got a check, what could you support? What is a non-starter, so that we can take those non-starters off the table right away? And now we're at the process of, these are our recommendations as we start rolling them out. What can get you excited about? So rates just yet, we haven't gotten into, they don't want to.
Right.
Let them out publicly, but those, our intent is for them to be paid.
It'd be very interesting now how we compare with other communities as far as our parking fees and stuff. I remember the Calm Week increased our take, parking tickets, that was a big issue. We doubled it to twenty-five dollars. So, yeah, you're right, it needs some community input, community buy-in.
So with that, would the concern be on market rates? Or counsel to support the plan in terms of the strategy specifically? Or would it be on behavior change? Or what would be the concerning factor with parking?
So, so my issue isn't about necessarily about making money, it's about changing behavior, you know? I mean, I, you want it to, you want it to be convenient, but you also want folks that, hey, I got to get my ten thousand steps in, I'll walk four blocks.
Yeah, pay fifty cents over here.
Pay fifty cents over here, rather than two dollars, right there.
And I think if we had this flexibility in this parking program, it would be really easy then for ADA clients or seniors or whomever who were always getting comments from businesses, my elderly, you know, clients can't come park at my front door. Well, then there might be a way to reduce the payment there. You know, we could maybe figure out some credit kind of thing for low-income or for the ADA type of situation. And it would work really well, rather than just, well, there's no parking, so you have to walk five blocks so your wheelchair can't make it up those hills.
Yeah.
Yeah. But also to the mayor's point, I agree, you know, in general, it's sort of kind of incentivizes that, you know, behavior change is too, because I think some people are conscious about not wanting to get fortunate to park in front.
Sure.
And then it makes it more willing, okay, I'll walk a block, maybe I'll walk two if I really have time, like you're saying. So I think it's worth exploration.
And if I want to pay fifty bucks to park in front of the place for an hour, I will.
Right.
Right.
So as I mentioned, along those lines, we're proposing a flexible parking pass, we're going to make a flat monthly permit. Again, this provides flexibility, both for those who have traditional schedules, those who make work higher schedules, or part-time, maybe you service employees who are evening their weekends or their schedule fluctuates throughout. Again, the intent here is that behavior change. The average month has twenty-two business days. So if you sold a twenty-day parking pass, there would be two days in a month where an individual can either drive, park and pay hourly or day rate, or they might have those two days. Hopefully, you choose to use transit or some sort of transit or transportation.
Would you also be able to, like say for the employee parking passes, not allow them to work on Main Street, so that they can only work on side streets or the off-streets?
Yep. So we would not recommend having parking passes for the on-street wear. This would be specific to off-street facilities.
Transit center and the parking lots.
We're also proposing the potential to expand your managed parking areas. And with this, we would provide some framework and guidelines around where it would be appropriate to expand these areas. So if you're seeing someplace with a left-street parking, do you sort of know the difference, for example?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep. Down in the Lago area, I mean, there's a couple of businesses who are experiencing this. Just providing those options so that you can put in those timing bits or perhaps paid parking or residential parking permit program. Having that be a prescribed process, so that it can be rolled out as it's identified.
Yeah, that was raised in, with the creation of the, at Thirty-Second Street, with the park, with the underpass. We're seeing a lot of people using the park and parking there, and then residents have no place to park. Yeah.
And that's where I think this next strategy will be of particular interest. And there was a lot of interest from the community on this, on the strategy. This is one that we're specifically taking to the open house for some feedback from them on, on how we would implement the neighborhood parking permit program. Or, as a lot of people refer to them, residential parking permit program. Some of the options with this is, could it be exclusive to just the residents? But then how do their visitors get accommodated? Is that through the time limits or paid parking or guest passes? With those guest passes, is that good for two hours, two days? How many of those can they get per year for each of their visitors? So this one in particular, there's a lot of options on how you can implement this. And then of course, there's the administrative side, how is a program like this funded? Because there's an effort that goes into it, yeah.
Excuse me.
We are also recommending the potential specifically downtown to man-buying Wade enforcement hours for. Early on in the process, it was brought up to us that there's a lot of anecdotal reports that parking demand throughout the evening is exceeding or continuing to fill those on-street spaces throughout the night. And when we did a projection based on the land uses, we absolutely see that. And just the visits that we've had here, we see that as well occurring. With the darker line here, the paid parking demand is reflective as it indicates all those paid transactions. So as parking stops being charged and enforced, you see that very quick drop-off. But the demand is actually going on beyond that. We're just not seeing it reflected in the transactions.
Right.
Absolutely, yeah. So just reevaluating that, perhaps starting later in the morning and going there in the evening. You can start at the same time and continue to run.
I, I'm going to just suggest that we did start late, so I acknowledge that. But we also have to eat and start each other the meeting, so I'm going to encourage just to keep our questions limited and to keep this moving.
So I will jump to what I imagine to be everybody's topic of interest. Additional parking supply and the potential for a parking garage on the transit center side.
Yeah, thank you.
At this time, Walker's recommendation is not to build a parking garage.
Oh my gosh.
That of course is the city's decision to make. And our plan will include what we would recommend being those decision makers. Your occupancy, funding options, potential partners in that site. Providing all of that framework to make an informed decision. What we are seeing today and projecting for the future need for downtown, it just doesn't justify it. There are lower-cost options that can have a more convenient impact through your parking demand management and your transportation. So again, here, just trying to drive home what that cost is. You know, you're looking at upwards of seventeen, twenty million dollars for our infrastructure.
Yeah.
And that is for your basic concrete box that's not going to be very inviting for visitors.
How much for a parking park?
Seventeen to eighteen, seventeen, twenty million, yeah.
Seventeen to twenty million.
Yeah. So on average nationally, the average space for a structure, structured space is twenty-eight thousand. And I really want to highlight here that in Colorado, what we have asterisks on those increased cost factors are very common here.
Yeah.
I know the city is moving to require ventilation or, excuse me, sprinklers. Ventilation will be required if it's not over here for lunch. The unique site conditions, of course, getting supplies out here is a challenge in and of itself. And then there's also the very rocky slope, so it requires more site creation.
Yeah.
And then the climate durability, Colorado's freeze-up cycles are notorious. So as opposed to building structure in Southern Texas or even down in New Mexico, it just requires eight different caliber material materials.
So this recommendation is very, very important. Is it possible that we can get, you know, are you going to be following up with information in writing so that we have it as a staff, so that they can use it for our information purposes and communications with the public?
Absolutely.
There's this patch that it's going to be more or not taken over the testing. Potentially, we can reach our copies of the new case.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure when they're all done with this process, there'll be a report.
There'll be a report.
Yes, yep. So in December, we are planning to come to you with our final plan recommendations to ask for your approval and adoption of that. And it will of course include that framework for the decision-making taxes, but.
And you'll have recommendations on next steps at that time?
Yes.
On the parking garage, can you, not only the cost, but can you also give us an estimate of what staffing might be needed, particularly for safety reasons? You know, because people, with a closed structure, people may be unwilling to go in to use it. Do you need to have full-time attendant? I don't know that, but I think we need that whole picture. Not just the, not just the build cost.
I'll supplement that, I don't have that, but it's something we can absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So interesting.
What, excuse me? Any other questions?
There'll be more later on.
There will be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. What's that?
We're going to head here?
We're going to catch Jose just for a minute.
Okay.
Maybe, well, they're eating for a minute.
Are we going to eat and discuss or?
Yeah, we're going to eat.
And then in Jose's office?
We just need to have a conversation with Jose as we are. Just a quick minute.